Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Our email address is carsonprinting@gmail.com.
Good evening. It is 6:30, and we had an executive session, and that has concluded. So this is the regular meeting of the Town of Falmouth Select Board for Monday, August 11th, 2025. Would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we begin, I'd remind everyone to silence your cell phone, and please notify the chair if you are making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. So our first matter is a proclamation to declare August 31, 2025, as opioid overdose Awareness Day in Falmouth. And I'm going to turn to Vice Chair Goldstone to read the proclamation.
Would you mind passing me the paper rather than the digital version?
Sure. There you go.
Thank you.
All right.
Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is a global campaign that works toward preventing overdose, reducing the stigma associated with it, and providing support to families and loved ones of overdose victims. And whereas the mandate of the Town of Falmouth's Commission on Substance Use is to prevent substance abuse amongst Falmouth citizens, provide information and education to the community, and to promote the development and availability of a continuum of substance abuse services for all Falmouth residents. And whereas the Commission on Substance Use sponsors Falmouth's annual observance of International Overdose Awareness Day with support from and participation by many organizations and town entities addressing substance use disorder. Now therefore, we, Robert P. Muscala, Heather M. H. Goldstone, Douglas C. Brown, Colin W. Reed, and Jack P. Richardson, the Town of Falmouth Select Board, do hereby declare Sunday, August 31st, 2025, as Falmouth's observance of International Overdose Awareness Day, and encourage all Falmouth residents to mark this solemn occasion by attending the commemoration on Falmouth Village Green that day. In witness thereof, we have herein to set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 11th day of August, 2025.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would you like to say anything? Bye-bye.
On behalf of the Commission on Substance Use, I want to thank the Select Board for issuing the proclamation. We appreciate the support of the town for this very important cause, and hope that many of you will be able to join us on the 31st. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brad O'Leary. Thank you. Okay, the next matter is a proclamation with respect to the Falmouth Historical Society 2025 Heritage Award, and I'm going to read that. It is a certificate of recognition. The Town of Falmouth honors James Lloyd. The Town of Falmouth recognizes its citizen, James Lloyd, recipient of the Falmouth Historical Society's Heritage Award on this 7th day of August, 2025, for exemplary service and dedication to the history and preservation of the Town of Falmouth. Signed by Robert P. Muscala, Chair, Heather M. H. Goldstone, Douglas C. Brown, Colin W. Reed, and Jack P. Richardson in absentia. So thank you very much, Mr. Lloyd. And Ms. Lovett, would you like to step up and just say a little bit about the award and Mr. Lloyd's contributions to the Town of Falmouth?
Yes, Rachel Lovett, I'm the Executive Director at the Falmouth Historical Society. We have had the Heritage Awards since about the year 2000. So every year, we honor a special person from Falmouth who has been a leader in the community, and Jim Lloyd was a natural fit. The society voted in January to have Jim Lloyd as the recipient. Jim Lloyd, he led trolley tours of historic Falmouth for about two decades. His late wife Caroline was heavily involved in the society. She was president, and Jim was there to support her. And also, after Caroline passed, he established an education fund at the Falmouth Historical Society in her memory. And because of that, Jim were able to do paid internships for young people, were able to offer free tours to kids, free and open to the public. We just had some campers come from the Gus Canty. And we do programming around the year because of what Jim has done in honor of his beautiful late wife Caroline. So it was just really a natural fit for the town, in the society.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate this, and encourage everyone to support our beautiful attribute here, the Falmouth Historical Society. Thank you, it's really appreciated. You're going to record this, and I'll see that it's mailed to Mr. Lloyd, but the Town Manager's Office wants to record it, and then we'll get it out to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Recognition is our next item. I'm going to... Well, anyone have any recognition?
I would just recognize the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department again had a pretty significant fire in East Falmouth over this past week, and I understand two firefighters were injured. Mr. DeMello, do you have anything you could share with us? Are they doing okay?
I did actually.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of them was from Joint Base Cape Cod, had a shoulder injury, and the firefighter from Falmouth had some issues with some eye... Some stuff got into his eye, but according to Chief Smith, everyone seems to be okay. So, once again, thanks to the fire department for their work. Thank you. Yeah, anything? No. Okay. Announcements. I will announce that yesterday I had the pleasure of attending the Court of Honor for Eagle Scout Denab Landre, and it was certainly, for me, a new thing. I had never been to one before, and it was really quite a ceremony. And, you know, in today's turbulent times, and I said this yesterday, you know, to hear the oath of an Eagle Scout, to hear their allegiance, it's really aspirational, and, you know, I think we should all should try and keep in mind what scouting, you know, stands for. So it was really a very good, very good thing that I was at. I appreciated the opportunity. Anyone else? No?
Couple of quick announcements. We all know the road race is this weekend. Sometimes flies a little under the radar, but very established and wonderful event. Also this weekend is the Falmouth Walk on Saturday, so I hope to see folks there. And then, the One Cape Conference registration has opened, and I know a few of us at least are planning to attend, but encourage anyone who's interested in the major issues facing the Cape. It's always a fabulous conference. It's going to be September 16th and 17th. So.
I don't have an official town announcement, but the Susapalusa Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society is having their feast... I don't know if it's a feast or a music festival, but Fresh Pond Holy Ghost from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. That's on Fresh Pond Road. It's a great organization.
Anything else? If not, we will move down to public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in discussion of the topic. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to public comment? Ms. Kocimba, please.
I live in North Falmouth, and I'm the current co-chair of the Falmouth Cultural Council, and I'm here just to express my sincere appreciation from the Cultural Council for the vision and contributions of Roger and Judy Day. Roger recently passed away on July 7th, and they had deep roots in Woods Hole, and this would be the 20th anniversary of Arts Falmouth, which they established, and we all have enjoyed the benefits of that vision. And I just wanted to say something personal about Roger and Judy Day. In addition to Arts Alive, the Woods Hole Trad Stroll, and Falmouth Jazz Stroll, which are all free and all-inclusive, they also used to hold meetups for all the arts organization. And I would say that vision of the sum is greater than the parts, that we could really pull together to really consider, like, the next 20 years. If they did this 20 years ago, where would we like to be 20 years from now? And I would personally say that we have so far to go to try to figure out how to bring communities together through the arts. And we live in his vision and her vision, and I just wanted to publicly thank them.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of knowing Roger fairly well during his life. He was a wonderful, wonderful man. Thank you.
If I could, that reminds me of a recognition that I missed about. North Falmouth Village Association had the Porch Fest this past weekend on Saturday.
As Alice said, it was a great event.
It was really, really... That's a cultural event. You know, there's so many different...
And it's free.
Yeah, it's free. Yeah, it was great. Great time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we will proceed to the consent agenda. I will read the consent agenda, and if anyone on the board would like to hold the matter, please indicate that you wish to hold the matter. The first is to consider a vote to approve an application from Mayflower Brewing Company for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license for three days for Van Fest. Cape Cod Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, 822-824-2025. Administrative orders. Consider a vote to execute a sewer easement on Falmouth Port Condominium Association property. Number two, consider a vote to expend the amount of $1,520 from the Beach Donations Account, 28-632-566-55-4830, to pay the balance on an invoice from New Wave Printing and Design. Number three, consider a vote to accept a donation in the amount of $500 from the Green Family to the Falmouth Rescue Department. Number four, consider a vote to authorize the Town Manager to execute an environmental notification form for Falmouth's Ocean Outfall Project for transmittal to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office, and I'm going to ask to hold that matter. Number five, consider a vote to approve an extension of the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station Intermunicipal Agreement, IMA, between Falmouth Mashpee and Sandwich.
Hold, please.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So I had a conversation with DPW Director McConerty, and this is not time-sensitive, so it'd be my recommendation that this item be removed, tabled, and we'll take it up on August 25th.
Very good. Thank you. Consider a vote to approve a request from the 300 Committee Land Trust, INC., for a conservation restriction at Zero Acapescot Road. Okay. Do I have a motion with respect to the matters that were not held? That would be number one, under licenses, number one, two, three, and six, under administrative orders.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. So we'll go to number four. Consider a vote to authorize the Town Manager to execute an environmental notification form for Falmouth's Ocean Outfall Project for transmittal to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office. Mr. Renshaw, do you have some comments with respect to that for us?
I do not have any direct comments, Mr. Chair. We've asked Amy Lowell to be here present this evening to answer any questions you may have with regards to the request.
You wanted to just give us a brief update as to what this form is and what we need to do in order to move the outfall forward?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, I'm Amy Lowell, I'm the wastewater superintendent, and this is the first... The submittal of the environmental notification form is the next very important step in the outfall planning and permitting process. The environmental notification form is the beginning of the environmental review process for the project. The MEPA or Mass Policy Act, Environmental Policy Act Office manages the environmental review process for the state. So submitting this begins the EIR, or Environmental Impact Review Process for it. The first step is this form, which has the ENF form, has a project narrative attached, which was included in your packet. And what was included in your packet is a draft. It is a near-final draft, but it needs some final edits, just procedural edits. I'd be glad to answer any questions about it. As you know, the town has been working, has worked really hard over many, many years to try to expand its treated wastewater discharge options, and we've come up against some hard boundaries in a lot of directions. Groundwater discharge is very difficult in Falmouth because most land in Falmouth is up gradient of an impaired coastal pond, and/or a drinking water source, and/or freshwater ponds and rivers. And therefore, even though we have a tertiary treatment plant, which does a terrific job of treating wastewater, if we discharge to land, we are... There are water resource concerns about any groundwater discharge. So our current groundwater discharge permit is limited, and the town, excuse me, has elected through previous discussions to use the remaining capacity at our plant for our next service area, the Great Pond Phase 1 sewer area that's proceeding at the end of this year, and for the remaining flow that's coming over the next number of years, and to proceed with an outfall for discharge of all future treated wastewater. We have discussed this in a number of town meetings, and the town has done an enormous amount of work over the past couple of years to lay the groundwork for this. The environmental impact, when we submit this form, we have a lot of data that we've already collected that we'll be able to provide the state. But the next step after this will be the draft environmental impact report, and you'll get a chance to review that as well. So I'd be glad to answer any questions about it, but that's the basic background.
And that report is prepared by whom, the next step?
So the town has an engineer, GHD, who is doing a lot of the work, but they're under my direction, and we also meet regularly with the water... We meet in front of, or we speak to the Water Quality Management Committee, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from them over time. And we've updated the Select Board off and on over time.
Mr. Rafferty, do you have anything to add to this discussion? Why am I not surprised?
No, I'm Steve Rafferty. I'm precinct two. I'm the Chair of the Water Quality Management Committee. We've been working very closely with Amy and all of these other studies we're doing. I would describe that relatively speaking, for the document we're going to put in with the state, which for a number of projects can expand because people have not done their homework, we as a community have done a lot of homework in terms of gathering the right data. And so this document should go forward with a few corrections, or whatever, small typos or whatever, and get the process started. We have a chance to shorten up the timeline for getting to an outfall because we've done so much of what I call the hard homework. I mean, we've had on-water, water quality stuff. Amy and GHD have been closely engaged with many people at the DEP, Mass Division of Fisheries and whatnot, as well as the MEPA folks. So this is not a surprise to them. They're looking forward to it, and once again, Falmouth has taken the lead on how to get things done right.
Thank you. About how long do you think it would take from filing this form to actually then having to go forward with the complete draft environmental impact statement?
So our goal is to complete a draft EIR next year, a draft environmental impact report next year, and have the final soon after that. There are many permits that we need to get for the outfall as well, and some of those need to be done in parallel with the environmental impact report, and some of them need the environmental impact report to be complete before we can move forward. But we will be doing a lot of work in parallel to try to make this available as soon as possible.
Thank you.
And I did want to reiterate that we have done an enormous amount of work. The town has done an enormous amount of work leading up to this. We've collected a couple of years of water quality data, we've collected a lot of eelgrass data, there's been a lot of modeling, and we've been meeting with regulators over the last several years on a regular basis. So we have done a lot of work to lay the groundwork for this submission.
Very good. Questions? Ms. Goldstone?
Yes, I have, I think really just one question. First of all, the amount of homework that has been done, as you've put it, is remarkable. I think it was something like 10 appendices that you shared with us in addition to the narrative and just an enormous amount of science. My question is around the expected flow rate from the outfall. I noticed in the narrative, in one place, it referenced modeling based on 2 million gallons per day. Is that MGD? In another place, it mentioned expected flow of 3 million gallons per day, and I think I've seen it could go up to 4, and so I'm just curious, what are expect... Like, what is the maximum capacity we're building for? What are we expecting it to be? And where in this... As we go through this process, just making sure that we're doing our homework and doing everything to ensure that we have the maximum capacity available to us when we get this built?
It's an important question. What's the design flow? So the design flow we're planning for is 3 million gallons per day, average annual flow. It's very important to make a distinction between average and peak. The peak flow, the peak design flow, is usually a little less than twice what the average flow is. So we're looking at an average annual flow of 3, which, to put that in perspective, is about six times the aver... Or a little more than six times the average annual flow we get from our current service area. Our current service area includes Woods Hole, all of Main Street, Davis Straits, some of T-Ticket Highway, the hospital, Surf Drive, the high school, you know, there's most... All except the East Falmouth Elementary School are connected. So the existing service area covers a small percentage of town, but it's a lot of the highest water users in town. So that gives you some perspective on the flow. We have done... We've done... We've looked at the future searing scenarios that we envision over the next 20 to 30 years, which is not set in stone right now, but which has... The town has put a lot of thought into. And the average annual flow, the average annual future, like, design flow, from everything that we've talked about searing over the next 20 or so years, 20, 30 years, is 1.74 million gallons per day. So that's searing the areas south of 28 that we've talked about searing, Acapescot and Seco Shores and Antler Shores and all those, as well as some area north of Route 28 to help with the nitrogen load removal in particular for Great Pond. So that 1.7 or so number includes everything that we've envisioned searing over the next 20 or 30 years. So I don't... The idea of having a... I can't remember exactly what your words were, but the maximum available. Obviously, with any project like this, there are cost limitations, there are factors that we'd need to... There are several factors that would make us not want to make this infinitely large. The, you know, you have to make the... You have to make the pipe bigger if you're planning for a higher flow. And as far as the permitting process, we'd have to... You want flexibility in what you're permitting, but if you're trying to permit something that is twice what you ever expect to get, you're making your... We would be making our job a lot harder. So that's the balance we are making. And I think we've done a lot of work on this, and the reason there... So I'm not... I don't know where the 4 number came from, but the 2, we did... Oh, I do know, actually.
4 might have been a peak statement or something at a previous presentation.
So, no, no. We did have... We did, in the early modeling, we modeled a 2 and a 4 million gallons per day, and we settled on a 3 number for the... For this EIR and the permitting. So, and that, we... I appreciate you pointing it out, that you didn't think it was clear in here, and we will... I'll take that and make sure that that is clear in what we're submitting, that we are planning for a 3 MGD outfall.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown?
A question not exactly related to this particular request, but we had a local resident send us an email saying that we should be thinking about adaptive reuse of some of this water for irrigation, or, you know, whatever. I would love to know if we could incorporate adding what they call a purple pipe, because I guess in California, they have this, and just lay it in the ground, at least from the end of Brick Hill Road up to the plant for later use. Maybe later, when we're ready to get it going, we can go to the high school and irrigate those fields, maybe go out to the Falmouth Country Club, maybe the East Falmouth School. There's probably a few places where we could use the water and reduce our outfall.
So putting in an outfall does not preclude future reuse of a portion of the water. The town, in the future, if it elected to do that, could put in additional piping and take away part of that flow from the outfall. So it doesn't eliminate that option. I wouldn't... We wouldn't put in the piping before we have that plan because it's really expensive to put in the piping. So you want to know what it's there for and have that permitted before you'd go put it in the ground. That is something the town could consider in the future. There are many permitting hurdles to doing that, for the same reason that it's difficult to expand our treated wastewater discharge permit where it is now. There would be challenges to putting treated wastewater on the ground anywhere, but it doesn't mean that it couldn't happen in the future. It is... There are a lot of hurdles to doing that.
Yeah. I thought maybe it would help the permitting process to know that we're thinking of it rather than just trying to dump all this water.
It would increase the complexity of the... It'd be permitting an entirely separate end-use. So I think it would increase the complexity. But certainly, as I said, putting in the outfall does not rule that out. That is definitely a potential, you know, the town could do that in the future if it wanted. In places... So the places where that is most frequently done is places where they have an extreme... An extreme, like Southern California, or Arizona, Florida, you've pointed out. So it is something the town could consider in the future. It is very expensive. Often involves another level of treatment. Not always, but if... But it can involve another level of treatment.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reed, any questions?
Mr. Brown just hit on my one thought there. Thank you.
Okay. So, Ms. Goldstone?
I'd be prepared to move approval to authorize the Town Manager to execute an environmental notification form for Falmouth's Ocean Outfall Project for transmittal to the Massachusetts Environmental Environmental Policy Act office as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
None.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Our next item is committee interviews. This is with respect to the EDIC, Edward Schwartz. Mr. Schwartz, would you like to step up and tell us a little bit about yourself? And is there anything in the application, in addition to the application?
No, nothing to the addition of the application. Just, you know, I've committed to everywhere that I've lived to be involved and try and get involved and try and help and try and be a good soul, good soul for the town that I, town or city that I live in. So I think my application is pretty self-explanatory.
Mr. Reed is on the EDIC. I have been on the EDIC. What do you see as your vision for the EDIC? Where can it take us? Where, where can it make some real impacts for the town?
So the initial interest came when, actually, as my role during my time on the municipal light plant, the municipal light board, that the EDIC, which funded the initial study that started FalmouthNet and, and got it rolling, that, you know, economic development is, is seen in many areas, not just building an industrial park, trying to bring businesses. No, it's housing, it's infrastructure, it's utilities, it's, it's all of that. So after the discussions and sitting with, with Wayne and, and Colin and the group, that my, a little bit of my background for the municipal light board, but also, I was involved back many years ago as a city councilman when Taunton-Stadton, its infancy of its industrial park, and anyone who's driven down 495 has seen the, the growth of the Miles Standish Industrial Park. That was a vision of economic development, not just to bring the new businesses, but what could it do for the community. And I think the EDIC, which is in the process of closing out its last piece of land at the Technology Park, and, and what they have going at the, at the bus station and, and housing, that there's some opportunities of where do we go next. And I think, and I'd really like to be part of that vision, working with the town, to how we can bring that vision forward. How do we continue to work for us housing, as well as bringing new businesses to town, bringing new industry to town, and upgrading things like municipal fiber infrastructure that is really necessary as we move into the future.
I meant to ask you, Mr. Renshaw, did you have any introductory comments with respect to?
I did not. Just to remind the board that this specific position is the Finance Experience Board Member position with the EDIC. It's a three, a three-year term, and this term would end June 30th of 2027.
Okay. And I understand you might sit in the position of the treasurer going forward.
Yeah. So I have 20 years of volunteer experience in a, as a chairman of a finance committee in a town that at its time did not have a town administrator. So acted as the chief financial officer within the town for, for many years, as well as taking some secondary courses that, within the state from procurement to, to understand the state's procurement. So yeah, a little bit of a financial background.
As you would in effect be replacing me, I'm happy to hear how, how qualified you are. Any further questions?
I'd just like to make a statement if possible, but go for it.
Yeah, please. No?
Okay. Well, I'd like to highly recommend to this board, Mr. Schwartz, what started as fiber connectivity has definitely grown over the course of many meetings with him. He has extensive knowledge about small business and large business. And as the EDIC starts to think about its vision for the future beyond just project management and actually becoming more of an economic development partner with the town of Falmouth, I think Mr. Schwartz will give us that additional piece of thought leadership that we want to start growing our board into. So I would like to make the motion to approve him if the time is correct.
I would second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Colin. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we have the Historical Commission, Mason Wilcox, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium.
Hi, Mason Wilcox. Currently, I'm a alternate member on the Historical Commission. And with the vacancy of Ed Hadad, I'm wishing to apply for his permanent position on the board and continue my service with the commission.
Okay. Again, Mr. Renshaw, do you have anything to add to that?
No, Mr. Chair, do not.
Okay. Any questions of any of the members here with respect to Mr. Wilcox?
Just one. I think we've, we've talked about this on this board before, that one of the great challenges with historic preservation, and I appreciate your personal experience with that, is balancing preservation with evolution of our town and our, and our needs. And so I would ask you, how do you, how do you think about that, especially as a historic homeowner?
When I was on the commission back in 2014, before the Coast Guard took me to Alaska and let me come back, it was anti-synthetic materials. And as a homeowner, it was very frustrating because I had the brunt of the maintenance of, of my own house. And I was happy to see during my temporary away from the board, we kind of matured into accepting more and more of these synthetic materials because they're both more environmentally friendly than cutting down trees and, you know, tons of paint, and they last longer. And they also are more energy efficient. So it's nice to see that we've kind of grown with the technology at the same time, and also keeping away the ugly materials, that kind of, that flashy cheap vinyls that kind of take away from the aesthetics. But at the same time, we can kind of grow with the way that the industry is going and be able to also keep, you know, really the biggest thing is environmental standards that we have to hold. The building department has to hold to the homes. So it's a, it's a nice balance. It just, it's getting better as technology gets better. So I'm happy that we can invest in it as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Well, every time we appoint someone to the Historic Commission, I, I also mention that I appreciate the new materials being included. But I also try to make a pitch for the traditional architecture that we have on Main Street and some of our historic areas. And I think in recent years, there's been sort of a trend to, to kind of go with what's new rather than being more of a traditionalist. So I just make this pitch to each person as they get appointed that, please remember that the traditional history, architecture, to me, I think it's important. So I hope you do too.
Very much so. It's a, it's a delicate balance. We don't want to run people out of town either. And you've got to find the right, you know, what works to keep people here at the same time, you know, keep the aesthetics the way we expect them to be.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. With all that, is there a motion?
I would make a motion to appoint Mason Wilcox to the Historical Commission as a full member for a term until June 30, 2028.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we will proceed to public hearings. Number one, consider a vote to approve the application submitted by Bands for Badges, Inc. for a one-day entertainment license for the Bands for Badges event at Cape Cod Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, on Saturday, August 30th, 2025, from noon to 10:00 p.m. Ms. DeMello?
Would you like me to read the notice of public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, open, open the hearing.
Yeah, I, I apologize. Yeah, please open the hearing.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183A of the General Laws, as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto, that Bands for Badges, Inc. has applied for a one-day entertainment license for the Bands for Badges event to be held at Cape Cod Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, on Saturday, August 30th, 2025. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, on Monday, August 11th, 2025, at or a little after 6:45 p.m. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthmatt.gov, per order of the Select Board.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that. Mr. Renshaw, anything that you'd like to say before?
Yes, real briefly, Mr. Chair, just as background for the, for the Select Board and the, and the members of the audience. The working group recommended approval of a special event. The working group met back on February 13th of this year. Public hearing notice was published, as Vice Chair just mentioned and read. The application was submitted along with the narrative of the event and the map showing location of the, of the event, and all of that information is included in your packet. Music will be set up on one stage, and there will be one sound and lighting system utilized. All amplified music will be directed away from the residential areas adjacent to the fairgrounds.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. DeMello, you have something to add to that?
Good evening. Boyd DeMello, Vice President of Bands for Badges, Incorporated. This is, I'm looking for a favorable approval of a entertainment license for our event on Saturday, August 30th, this coming Labor Day weekend. This will be our fifth year out at the fairgrounds. A little break during the COVID era, but we're back. Our primary goal is we, we raised money to help support police firefighters, military personnel here on the Cape and the islands. We've been very successful at that over the last five years. We run a pretty tight ship at the event. I, to my knowledge, we have had no complaints. We've had no problems at the, at the event. We're there for one day. We're in and out. And like it says in the application, our music is directed, our music stage is near the Nathan Ellis Highway, but it faces out into the fairgrounds through the Asshumon Holly Reservation. And we determined early on in our career out there that that was the best way to do it, to keep the music out of the Plum Hollow neighborhood and the church and all that area. So it's, it's been a good business model for us for five years now.
So the entire fairgrounds would be part of the event. Is that correct?
No, we don't use the entire fairgrounds. We generally, for those that are familiar with the fairgrounds, it's, it's on the main hill of the fairgrounds, between the big marketplace building and the smaller building atop the hill, and generally what is considered the food court during the fair. The parking is all on the same side as 151. We don't use the lots across the street. So our parking is mainly in that Lot 4. And then we have overflow parking in what would be the midway area during the fair.
Okay. Any questions?
Did you bring a poster with the lineup of the bands?
No, I didn't, sir. And please don't ask me all the names of the bands because I'm forgetting them all right now. I knew you were going to ask me, and I knew that was kind of, we'll email you.
All right.
Okay.
It's a great event. I go every year. And I missed it last year because I had COVID again. Jeez. But I, hopefully I can make it this year.
I look forward to seeing you there.
Okay. So is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I move approval.
Do we have any public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak with, with respect to this matter? Hearing, hearing, seeing none, would have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion with respect to the application? Or is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'm prepared to move approval of the Bands for Badges event for August 30th, as requested.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay. I'm going to move on from, from number B or letter B. I received a text from Mr. Meagan earlier today saying that he might be a little late. He's busy playing Cape Cod, Codger baseball this evening, and said he might be a, a few minutes late. So we will go to C, which is consider a vote to approve the application submitted by Shipwrecked LLC for a one-day entertainment license for the Shipwrecked Asics Falmouth Road Race Afterparty Event at Shipwrecked Heights Hotel Parking Lot on Sunday, August 17th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Ms. Goldstone for the hearing notice.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183A of the General Laws, as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto, that Shipwrecked LLC, located at 263 Grand Avenue, Falmouth, Massachusetts, has applied for a one-day entertainment license for an event to be held in the parking lot of Shipwrecked and the Heights Hotel, 263 Grand Avenue, on Sunday, August 17th, 2025, between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Massachusetts, on Monday, August 11th, 2025, at 6:45 p.m. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthmatt.gov, per order of the Select Board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out to the board that the applications for the Shipwrecked Asics Falmouth Road Race Afterparty were reviewed and discussed by the Internal Working Group for Special Events. During its meeting held on Tuesday, June 10th, the working group recommended approval of this special event and for the applications for the one-day wine and malt liquor license and entertainment license to move forward for the Select Board's approval. And there's a note here, Mr. Chair and Select Board, that the music will consist of guitar for duo soloist and DJ amplify. The music will be lightly amplified during the race, but will not infringe upon the proceedings of the road race.
Okay. Thank you. Sir?
I'm Rob Lowen. I'm the GM over at the Heights Hotel and Shipwrecked. And it's the same event that we pull every year after the road race. Everything is in the same fashion it has been the last couple of years. We do have full-on security. We have been working closely with the road race to make sure that lines are where they're supposed to be, not blocking any medical roads, so on and so forth. Entertainment is just a DJ outside, and then we have an acoustic inside later in the afternoon. So it's just the DJ outside from, technically starts around 10:30 till about 5:00, 5:30, and we start to shut it down. But it does not infringe on anything that's happening on the field or introducing any of the runners or anything like that. We stay until basically the last runner's come in, then we kind of kick it in a little bit. But for the most part, we hold off until the race is pretty much closed up. And then, you know, we continue the after-party at our place. We do have wristbands. We have people full-on for ID checks, so on and so forth. We have frontiers security that walks around through the parking lot to make sure that there's no underage and so on and so forth. It is a family event, but we do have bracelets and all that stuff in, in fashion for that event. But typically, that's, it's just an after-party. We have beer trucks provided by L. knife, and we, that's pretty much it. Just your regular everyday after-party after a road race. It's a little bit on a bigger scale.
You're doing very well. I would say that much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goldstone?
Have there, you mentioned this has been going on for several years. Have there been any complaints?
No, for the most part, no. Not that I've, not that I've heard. I mean, it's run pretty smooth. You know, we, it's just kind of just a fun runner's race. It's just a, just a runner's party. So no, we haven't really had that many complaints, and actually haven't really had any. Like I said, we shut it down pretty early. By 6 o'clock, parking lot's empty, and everybody's inside doing their thing.
Just a great day in Falmouth, and
It's a great day in Falmouth, yeah.
It really is. Thank you. And we haven't gotten any, any complaints or any emails. At least I haven't.
No, I can confirm that. In the two years that I've been here, no complaints.
Excellent.
Okay.
Sure the runners appreciate a nice cold beer after the run?
Nice situations, not that.
Okay. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the application? Okay, seeing none. I'll have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any further discussion amongst the board with respect to the application?
No.
No, I'd like to make the motion, given the fact that the Internal Working Group for Special Events reviewed this thoroughly. The motion to approve the application submitted by Shipwrecked LLC for a one-day entertainment license as described, be approved.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right. We're still waiting for, we're on the water. I guess maybe they're in extra innings. So number D or letter D, discuss and consider a vote to approve a request for a variance to flow neutral bylaw from Colley Site Services LLC on behalf of Pilgrim Holdings, 683 Main Street, Falmouth Parcel, 47B, 05010000. Ms. Goldstone for the notice, please.
Notice is hereby given that the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 11th, 2025, at 6:45 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Massachusetts, on the application of Colley Site Services LLC on behalf of Pilgrim Holdings for a wastewater flow variance under Chapter 180, Section 56 of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called flow-neutral bylaw for redevelopment of commercial residential property from office space to residential use at 683 Main Street in said Falmouth Parcel, 47B, 05010000, per order of the Select Board.
Thank you. Do I understand, counsel, you have some, some comments with respect to this application?
I do. I understand that there is a question about a referral from the Board of Health that is mentioned in the bylaw. And this is at Section 180-56A2. And under that section, if the Board of Health does not act on the referral within 45 days, then that referral is considered a positive referral. And that is one of the requirements for this board to consider under the guidelines for whether or not to grant a variance. It is not determinative for your It is not determinative for your analysis, it's simply a component of it. So you must treat that referral, because it was, it has passed the 45 days as a positive referral, and then continue on to the other guidelines and do your analysis about whether or not to grant the variance.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Renshaw, do you have anything to add to that?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Town Council indicated, you have a copy of the guidelines in your package this evening. I did want to add also, the application was submitted back on April 29th of this year, the plan from Colley Site Services. As the Vice Chair indicated, the developer wishes to convert the existing commercial office use portion of the building to residential. Included in your packets is a table that was created by the Wastewater Superintendent, showing existing and proposed Title V design flows, i.e. peak flow, for the property, and there's a, according to the calculations, it's projected an increase in average flow of 120 gallons per day. But I think also, Mr. Chair and Select Board members included in your packet for this public hearing is a memo from the Wastewater Superintendent providing the Select Board with some context with regards to remaining discharge capacity.
Okay, thank you. So we'll hear from the applicant?
Good evening. My name's William Colley of Colley Site Services, representing our client Pilgrim Holdings, owners of 683 Main Street. 683 Main Street was formerly a real estate office with two bedrooms. Our client is proposing to convert the building to six-bedroom units with no commercial space, one being affordable bedroom. We are requesting the variance to the flow-neutral bylaw. The current existing flow is 420 gallons per day, and the proposed will be 660 gallons per day for an increase of 240 gallons. The plan was submitted to the Board of Health and the Falmouth Wastewater Division for their review, and from what I understand, there are no issues, no negative issues that came back to us, so we're requesting for the variance.
Okay, all right, so I would gather that under the priority areas for waiver variance in consideration, this would come under bullet number two, affordable housing, as there will be affordable housing at the, at this, once the development goes forward? Do you have one apartment?
Yes, the only one that has two bedrooms will be the affordable one. All the other four units are all one-bedroom.
They'll all be one-bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, sorry, can I just clarify? So it's five units, four one-bedroom, one two-bedroom affordable?
The one that has two bedrooms is the affordable one.
Okay, very good. Okay. It's all had with respect to the priority areas. Does anyone have any other questions with respect to this? Ms. Lowell is here, if we need some help with respect to the flow-neutral variance, the numbers?
I don't have any questions, I have just a comment.
Well, a comment counts.
Yeah, I would say it seems like a constructive adaptive reuse of a property that's underused, and I think it looks like a reasonable request.
Okay, anyone else?
I would second that. I think the question I have for the superintendent outside of this is, that's 240 gallons per day subtracted from the available 82,000, no?
No, we have, or we used some of that up.
All right.
So the 82,000 is an average number, so the number I would use is 120. It was what would be subtracted from it, 120 gallons per day. I apologize for the, if it's confusing, but the flow-neutral bylaw refers to peak flow, but it is, it makes more sense as far as my wastewater flow tracking to track average, so I talk about both of them. So when the variance is voted, it would be voted based on a peak flow number, which is 240 gallons per day. But the amount that I would take out as far as our average flow tracking is 120.
From the 82.
From 82,000.
From 82,000, yes.
If I may, Ms. Lowell, while you're there, can you tell us when the last flow-neutral variance was before the Select Board?
It's been quite a while, and I'm not sure what the last one was.
6418.
Okay, I thought it was a while ago, so...
It's dated right here, we have it in front of us.
That's the...
That's the policy date.
The bylaw, right?
Oh, is that, I thought that's what you meant.
No, I'm sorry, I meant when we had the last variance request.
Oh, excuse me.
I would have said it was a year ago. I apologize, I don't know.
I think it was the restaurant up here for Blue Moon?
Greek Restaurant?
They got one.
Blue Moon was probably the most recent, yeah, that's right.
I don't recall what the most recent is.
Probably been over two, you know, around the two years, it's been over a year for sure.
I don't remember doing one since I've been on.
Okay, well, I know I've asked, and maybe we're going to get some information from the planning department, so that as these may be coming up, we'll have a little better understanding of what may be in the pipeline, no pun intended, with respect to some of these other applications that may be coming forward. But, okay, anyone in the audience would like to speak to this application? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I guess my, I absolutely agree that the reuse, redevelopment of property already in sewer area to housing is fabulous. Have you considered making even one of the one-bedroom apartments affordable, and do you have any sense of what the rental rates on those one-bedrooms might be?
So we are doing five units because we have by right, and by Mr. Cod's regulations, we had to give one as affordable. So we decided to get the two-bedroom ones, that's bigger to be the affordable one. We can change for the one-bedroom, too, it's just a matter of...
I guess I was looking for an increase overall in affordability, since that's really...
Getting another one as affordable, I don't think, that's Mr. Cod, and having to talk to Jed about that, but I don't think we, I mean, we might be able to, but it's just a matter of like, what's the regulation for Mr. Cod says?
That's a good question to ask, and I don't...
No, please, Mr. Brown.
I don't know if it's been discussed, it probably has, but we do have the Affordable Housing Fund. If there was a financial hardship, that maybe that could come into play, I don't know how this has been handled. If it's a by right, we may not have been really negotiating or discussing those options, do you know?
Right, so you know, it, the applicant is, you know, absent the flow-neutral bylaw. In order to be eligible for Mr. Cod, I believe the owner is accurately described, he's not obligated to do more than one affordable unit.
Right.
So I think that much is clear, no one's asking if two units are required. I believe Select Board Member Goldstone is saying, well, we would like two because we want more affordable. That affects your bottom line.
Right.
So, you know, it's, I guess it's a question of to what extent this board wants to use its influence, and it may be a question for Town Council, whether it's even, you know, appropriate for this board to seek more affordable housing in connection with the flow-neutral variance.
Probably not appropriate, but...
Probably we would have trouble conditioning this variance on more than what the applicant has provided.
I agree, I don't think we can condition it, I would agree with that, I was just offering to, wondering if the conversation had been breached because it's a by-right project, so maybe it didn't come up.
I would just add that the board has guidelines for how to administer the bylaw and to stick to those guidelines.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
So to that end, the guidelines reference the affordable housing goals as identified in the local comprehensive plan and the housing production plan, which I'm personally more familiar with, the housing production plan, which I know talks about more than just affordable, meaning 80% of area median income or below, it also talks about 100%, 120, even 140%. To that end, I wonder if it might be appropriate to ask the applicant if they could commit to year-round housing as opposed to short-term rental on the other four units, because that would be consistent with the housing production plan goals.
Okay, I think that's a fair question. Can you respond with respect to the housing being year-round, which is certainly something we're...
Yeah, so we're planning to do a year-round residency, but would love to have at least one, if it's possible, to do a short term, because we're planning to keep like people there all the time, so, and then having the opportunity to have like a short term if it's possible, at least just one.
Well, how does the board feel with respect to the application? Do you want to hold it and not vote the variance this evening?
I don't think that's fair.
See, I'm just asking, I'm not suggesting that it's something we want to do.
I don't think we should do that, but I just wanted to make them aware that it may be a possibility to offset your cost by using the Affordable Housing Fund, maybe go back and talk to staff at, would it be the planning office they would talk to for that?
Yeah, that would be the start.
Right. So if you and your team think it's something you're interested in, maybe talk to the planning staff and see...
For to do what?
If you wanted to make one more unit more affordable, or make the rents more affordable, you could talk to the Community Development Director, Jed Cornoch, and see if it's something that you might want to come back to us and talk about. We're not going to hold you up, I don't think, today.
Okay.
Because that wouldn't be fair, but if, you know, if it's something that you think you might be interested in.
So I just, at this point, we just need to calculate everything that we're spending so far, and see if it's going to be viable to keep that way.
Right.
Because initially, we were, we're holding that project for over six months now, not being able to do what we're planning to do, even though we have by right because of all the meetings and variances and stuff like that we're having to do. So at this point, we're like, almost breaking even the way we are, so.
Right, sorry about that.
You know, I've, for one, very happy that it's the two-bedroom that's going to be affordable, because that is a more pressing need that we have for families with maybe one or two children, so...
That's why we chose the two-bedroom.
I certainly appreciate that provision. Yes, Ms. Goldstone?
I'm not sure if we have the people in the room to answer this, but with it being Mr. Cod with one unit affordable, will one unit or five units go on to the subsidized housing inventory? One, so this adds...
Oh, well, if it's rentals, they all count. No, I guess that's right, if they're, if they're all rental units, then all the units in the complex would count.
I don't think it's any different because it's Mr. Cod, right? I mean, that's your question.
I was just wondering, because for, if it's a 40B, it has to be a quarter, and this is not, this is a different...
Got it.
Right, but if it's 40B, a quarter have to be affordable, but all count toward the subsidized housing inventory, and I'm just trying to think in terms of consistency of this project with our housing goals, are we getting one unit or five units?
That's a great question, I'm not sure.
Well, that's something we'll look into, but Mr. Cod only requires, yeah, just to be clear, okay. All right, again, was there anyone in the audience? I don't believe so. So a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any further discussion amongst the board with respect to the application itself? I think we all bring, or many of us brought up some very good points that I think need to be addressed and may be considered by the applicant, but I think with respect to this particular application, we're ready to proceed. If someone would like to make a motion?
I move approval of the request for flow-neutral bylaw for, is there an official motion? Let's see.
Request for variance to the flow-neutral, here. Take it off of the, this one.
I would approve the request for variance to the flow-neutral bylaw from Colley Site Services LLC on behalf of Pilgrim Holdings at 683 Main Street, Falmouth, Parcel 47B 05010000, runs 50, and that's it.
All right, you have a motion, is there a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, I guess it took a long time to get to you, but...
Okay, we will go back to B, as I see that the applicant is here. We're going to consider a vote to approve the application submitted by On the Water LLC for a one-day entertainment license for the Stripper Fest event at the Band Shell Marina Park, 180 Scranton Avenue on Saturday, September 27th, 2025, from noon to 6:00 p.m. Ms. Goldstone for the notice.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 183A of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto, that On the Water LLC has applied for a one-day entertainment license for the Stripper Fest event to be held at the Lynn Whitehead Band Shell at Marina Park, 180 Scranton Ave., Falmouth, on Saturday, September 27th, 2025, with a rain date of Sunday, September 28th, 2025, between the hours of 12:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, on Monday, August 11th, 2025, at 6:45 p.m. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthmad.gov per order of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real brief overview, the applications were received from Stripper Fest and reviewed and discussed by the Internal Working Group back on April 2nd. Working Group recommended approval of the special events and the applications for the one-day wine and malt liquor license and entertainment license to move forward to Select Board. The band Sudden Relic, which is the same band that's used in past years, is an eight-piece group that will play approximately four 45-minute sets from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Band Shell. Recorded music, there's a note, recorded music will play when the band takes a break.
Okay, the applicant is here, but the big question is, did you win?
I wish, I wish I could say we won. We started out with, first off, I want to apologize to the board, we started out with 14 players in our over-55 league, and we're down to nine. So if I didn't play today, we forfeit, and we probably should have forfeited if we had played.
All right, well, please introduce yourself.
We're limping to the finish line, but it's, in the past, I understood there's some of the limitations as far as the parking lot.
Just introduce yourself, Mr. Meagan.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Chris Meagan, the publisher with On the Water LLC, and started that back 29, it'll be 30 years in, next year. Started right here in town, and been a great partnership with the town ever since.
Okay, anything further you'd like to add with respect to your application?
It's, I think that in the past, there's been some limitations as far as putting tents up in the parking lot, and we've abided by those over the last few years, we just kind of compacted everything. We tried to keep as many people off the grass as possible, thought that the parking lot might be a better use for some of that traffic, just because the parking lot can get, the field itself can get beat up, but understanding the limitations. It's the last Saturday in September, I don't really feel there's that much traffic that goes through there. I walked it last year, I think, Pete, I don't know if you came down on Friday or not, I can't remember, it all kind of blends together.
I think it was the year before.
Was it? Yeah, it all blends together, but usually by Sunday morning, I'm the first person there at 6:00 a.m., and I police the field with my staff, a couple of those folks, and we just make sure it's back to it. If it's raining, we'll come down a few days later, if we put any hay down, we rake it up and work with the town as far as just returning the field back to where it was. It's been a great resource, and we're happy to be a part of it.
We haven't had any issues with respect to the cleanup after the event, or, no? Okay, I don't think we've had any complaints, then I'm aware. Yes, Mr. Brown?
I don't think there's official complaints, I get calls almost every year from the same group of people that say, you're taking all the parking, so I appreciate if you've been able to free up a little bit more parking for this last couple of years, so...
Just something to keep in mind, and I understand that, right, we're not going to fight Town Hall on that, but I sent some photos to, you know, two, was what it was, three or four Thursdays ago, we're pulling the boat on a Thursday, and there's no parking in the parking lot where the trailers go, because the farmer's market was using both sides of that field, so there was, all the cars were pulling into the parking where the trailers are, and you couldn't get any parking, and that's the middle of the summer, and that's every single Thursday over the course of the summer. And I'd love to figure out how many of those folks are taxpayers in this community, for what it's worth. I'd just be curious to see how many of those folks are, but on the last Saturday in September, it is what it is, we clear up as much as that as we can, Mr. Brown, and we will continue to do that.
Appreciate it.
And we appreciate your working with the town and taking all that into consideration. I know you've made some proposals with respect to parking, and maybe they can be explored at some time in the future, but this year, it's as it is, and, you know, I think it's a good event, so, does anyone else have any questions?
It's a good point about the market, but maybe because it's a Thursday, it's less impactful, it's less of a critical day.
Yeah, just, you know, it was myself and two other captains there, and we were pulling in, one was pulling in to go in in the afternoon, and I took photos throughout the whole thing, and then one of the guys said he called over to the office, but they had already issued multiple tickets that day on it, so, I just, if it's, from the outside looking in, Mr. So I just, if it's, from, from the outside looking in, Mr. Brown, it's hard to think that on the last Saturday in September, that area that we take up versus the farmer's market that takes up every single Thursday on both sides of that parking lot, every single Thursday, it just, it seems a little unfair when you consider the last Saturday in September against every Thursday during the summer. But it is what it is.
I hear you. Good point.
And I, I think we should try to explore maybe some other options going forward. But in any event, is there anyone in the audience? Yes, sir. Please step up and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Joseph Locke. I am the property manager for the, for the La Morti Apartments right across the street from the, from the Band Shell. And just wanted to provide our continued support for all the events that are going on there, but Striper Fest in particular, for, for this. But, you know, Coast Fest, the Susa Palooza, everybody has been doing a wonderful job on, ending the music on time, and the cleanups have been, have been spectacular. I mean, they, they just, everybody's been doing a really good job with it. And, you know, we represent, or I represent 67 residents ranging from three years old to 94 years old. And almost, almost to the person, they all, they all enjoy the, to be able to hear the music. If they can't go over or don't want to go over the event, they're able to, to enjoy it from their balconies or from, from our front lawn. And the continued use of, of Marina Park as a venue to, you know, for these type of events is just strongly encouraged by, by the, by my, at least my population in my building. So, yeah, we, we, we love it and, you know, for, you know, nothing else. But I've been a fisherman since I was, I don't remember how young. And, you know, this continuing this, which I think in some veins, you know, promoting fishing is not, has, has been falling off. But I think it's a great way to really instill in our young people a sense of conservation and use, proper use of the environment.
Thank you. We continue to appreciate your coming every year and supporting the, supporting this, this application. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Mr. Megan, anything else you'd like to add?
Just, I have one last thing. Is that I would love to still explore, if it's possible, a private-public partnership on that field to put in water and to put in, you know, I just think that there's enough groups of us that use this that would kick money into putting a sprinkler system or to putting in water there. A lot of these events have cooking facilities that go on there. And I think part of, and we don't do the cooking, Black Dog does that, but I think they have to have water on-site to do that. So we usually run it up from one of the docks. But I just think it would be just great in that, to do, you know, I think that I could chair enough of the private side of it to, you know, if the, if the town could help install or come up with it, to put some water on that field. Every year, by the time we get to the end of the year, that field takes a beating, and it's just such a great resource. And I think that the water comes right down that, that road there. So tapping into one of those, I think would be great. But I just, it would be nice to have it. When we, going back, and I don't know how many years ago, it was probably like 17, 18 years ago, we were up at Bourne Scenic Park. And what they do is they had these, they have water under the ground in each area, and they just shut them off in the winter, they drain them, and they, and they, and they. But what was great about it, you could lift the cover off, you could turn the water on, you could bring it up in different locations. But I just think it would be great because I know that, as a company, I know I would kick into that, and I know that some of the other groups that are in there would kick into that. But these are the kind of public-private partnerships that can get things like that done to a field that I think is just great.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks for the suggestion, taken under advisement. Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. With respect to the application, anyone have any further discussion with respect to it?
Nope.
Someone prepare to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the application submitted by On The Water LLC for a one-day entertainment license for Striper Fest to be held at the Band Shell at Marina Park, 180 Scranton Ave. on Saturday, September 27, 2025, with a rain date of Sunday, September 28, 2025, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second that.
Second, Mr. Brown? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can apologize for doing any of this.
No, that's all right. Thank you. Okay. With respect to E, discuss and consider a vote to approve a request for variance to the flow-neutral bylaw from Imai Keller Moore Architects on behalf of La Cucina Solmari Restaurant, 237 Main Street, Falmouth, Parcel 47A12088000. Ms. Goldstone for the motion, for the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 11, 2025, at 6:45 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Massachusetts, on the application of Imai Keller Moore Architects on behalf of La Cucina Solmari Restaurant for a wastewater flow variance under Chapter 180, Section 56 of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called flow-neutral bylaw, for increased flow for a proposed roof-deck project at the restaurant located at 237 Main Street in said Falmouth, Parcel 47A12088000, per order of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw, with respect to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant spoke with Town Council earlier this afternoon, and it's my understanding that the applicant has requested to withdraw the application. There's some additional documentation that needs to be supplied to the Health Department for review.
Correct. And some other additional data in support of their contention that this will support economic development. And so the withdrawal will be without prejudice to refiling the application when they have the information.
So do we need to vote on the withdrawal? Or it's sufficient that it just be withdrawn at the request of the applicant?
It's sufficient that it's simply withdrawn at their request.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will move on to.
Mr. Chair, motion to close the public hearing? Since we opened it? You opened it, so you can close it.
Okay. So a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to business, and we are close to time today. Discuss and consider a vote to approve the fiscal policy with proposed amendments. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board was presented this proposed revised fiscal policy at its last meeting. I'm not going to go through the entire background summary. The Finance Director, Laura Citrin, is here to present some revisions based upon that discussion and answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Well, we did have a detailed report from Ms. Citrin last, last meeting, and it was very well and very informative. So maybe very briefly, if you want to touch on a couple of the key aspects of it?
Okay. Well, I sent you a revised redline version, which shows only the changes as a result of the questions that came up at last meeting. So just quickly to go through those, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The, so there was some question as to the, there were two pieces of revenues, Item D under revenue policy and Item H under revenue policy that seemed like they were kind of in contradiction. So after taking a look at that, we changed Item D to add after it's a state. Annually fees will be reexamined. Possible new revenue sources will be recommended for adoption by the Select Board to maximize revenue potential to the extent allowed by law, period. So we added the extent allowed by law, and we eliminated Item H, which really does not, it basically says we comply with the law. So it's kind of redundant at this point. There was a question as to the operating budget, whether we should change the language to say that the town will not use one-time revenues to fund ongoing operations. And we just changed it to add in the word budget. So it says the town will not budget one-time revenues to offset ongoing operations. And then the final change is on the next page, Reserve Fund Balance Policy. There was a question as to why Items B and C seem to say the same thing. I changed the language a little bit. I hoped I was making it clearer, but I want to explain it a little bit. So fund balance, unassigned fund balance, or undesignated fund balance on the financial statements is made up of the difference between, the accumulated difference between revenues and expenditures over the course of years. So it's essentially what people would think of as net profit, maybe, in layman's terms. No such terminology in governments, but that's, so it also includes any, any stabilization fund. All right? So what happens is, our policy is 5% to 15% of operating budgeted expenditures as a reserve. But because we've been putting a lot of money into the Capital Improvement and Debt Stabilization Fund to the tune of, I think we're just shy of 20 million right now for, for future needs, that, that balance has increased dramatically. So we changed it to take that into account by adding Item C, where it says 15% to 25% of operating budgeted expenditures, categorized as total unassigned fund balance, which includes all of the stabilization funds versus just the other unassigned fund balance and the general stabilization fund, which is obviously set aside for emergency situations.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the modification with respect to not budgeting one-time revenues. That was a point that I had made. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I just have a question of interest. It's not anything to do with the way this is written, but why are we, why do we have to have a cap of 25%? Couldn't we just go as far as we want to? If we wanted a bigger fund, we could probably do it, right?
Absolutely. You can, as long as there's not concern that the town is starting to stockpile funds for no particular reason. So if you have a reason, you certainly can exceed that.
Okay.
There are municipalities that, for a variety of reasons, can get up to 40%, 50% reserve.
With such huge capital.
It becomes a, right.
With such huge capital projects in line, I mean, we can certainly justify that it's, there is a reason if we wanted to, to go higher.
And I would say right now, we're probably at about 18% or 19%. So that's why we took it up to 25%.
And we're not likely to exceed the 25, and we can always revisit this if we need to, right?
We can certainly spend the capital and debt stabilization in the next few years.
That's right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reed, any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Goldstone?
I think I might be looking at an old version that doesn't reflect all of the.
Keep scrolling down. It took me a while to find it as well.
Yeah, it took me a while to find it, but I, but I did.
There's two red lines.
It's, oh, a second red line.
There's a second red line, and that's what, what Ms. Citrin was just reading.
Excellent, okay.
It's after the debt management policy. There's a first red line, then there's a debt management.
Right.
And then there's an August 11 red line.
Okay. Appreciate that. And appreciate those edits and also the, the helpful explanations. So thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, I would be ready to move approval of the amended fiscal policy dated August 11, 2025, as presented.
I'm ready.
Okay. Is that a second, Mr. Brown?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next matter is a report from the Human Services Committee. Who will be coming? Delaney, please step up and introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Karen Delaney. I am the co-chair of the Human Services Committee. I just want to say thank you for letting us come and do the report. I'm honored to be up here. I, if any of you have saw, there's an article in your packet. The department is celebrating 50 years this year, which is just an absolutely incredible feat, particularly when you look across the Cape Towns. What this department has done for the Town of Falmouth is remarkable. And as a committee chair, it's our work to support the work of the department and bringing information to you. And it's, as we researched the article, to know that the original department was created by a Human Services Committee, who looked at the needs in this town and, and saw a need. And from that, 50 years later, what this department, Suzie and her team, are able to do is just absolutely incredible. So I hope you had a chance to read the article because Mike Bahari, my co-chair, just did an absolutely fabulous job. And in my day job, I'm, work at the Falmouth Service Center. I'm the executive director, and it's fascinating to know that that also came out of that 50 years ago, one of the projects that they originally worked on. So I just want to say what an incredible department, the Human Services Department is, and just wanted to highlight that in fiscal year '25, they provided a total of 3,505 encounters to 244 residents, encompassing individual group sessions and a number of special programs. They also oversee a number of grants, in particular around several key areas in terms of mental health, homeless prevention, outmigration. And this year in homeless prevention, they provided $70,000 to Housing Assistance Corp. for housing stabilization case management, and $5,000 to Duffy Health Center and the In From the Streets program for the winter program. Their department and a number of other key agencies in town meet through the In From the Streets Essential Services Network. And through the Hack Homeless Outreach Program, they assisted over 500 individuals. And through In From the Streets, 54 unique individuals. This is an incredible, it's a huge amount of work. And the grants that the town provides really helps bring these services to Falmouth residents. In addition, there's the outmigration, looking at workforce development, childcare issues. The YMCA received $20,000 for that program. They provided scholarships for children to attend the morning and afternoon sessions. They provide camp scholarships as well. And there was a support services grant for $9,500 to sharing kindness. And this year, the committee worked with the department to look at the emerging needs. And one of the things was the, looking to help the Immigration Resource Center with the work that they are providing here. In addition, I believe you know that department has eight hours a week now of a Portuguese, Brazilian Portuguese-speaking social worker, which has been a huge addition to the department. And the committee, you know, took a lot of information and worked with the department to have that eight hours, which has been excellent. In addition, Falmouth, the department celebrated the Pride Event in conjunction with a number of other departments. In, there were over 200 attendees this year. I don't know if any of you, I think some of you were there. Actually, Heather read a citation. That's probably not the right word.
Proclamation.
Proclamation. But, oh, good.
Proclamation, yes. Citation is something naughty, right?
It can be both.
A proclamation. And that was just an incredible coming together of several departments in this town, several organizations in the town, and just a huge number of volunteers. It was just an absolutely incredible event. And in the committee's work to look at more issues, we try to invite a community partner or another organization to our meetings to look at addressing some of the needs. We've had the Falmouth Police Department Social Workers, Duffy Health Center, Barnstable County Human Services, the Immigration Resource Center. We had Sheriff Buckley at one of our meetings, looking at constantly what are the issues of mental health, homeless issues, affordable housing, all the things that impact the mental health in this town. So I can't say enough about the department and the work of the committee to bring these issues to you. Take any questions.
Thank you. Thanks for the good work you're doing, certainly for the department as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are we supporting your efforts sufficiently?
No, right ahead.
I think, can we always use more? I mean, every department in town could use more. I would say the mental health crises that are, we're seeing in terms of the Essential Services Network, there was a grief group in the schools. I mean, some of the issues this town is facing, I can't say enough about what the department is doing, but could we do more? Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Goldstone?
I'm curious, to your point about constantly looking at what the needs are, as we're seeing social and health benefits at the federal level shifting, have you seen that changing need at the Falmouth level yet?
So I'll speak wearing my day hat. We're starting to see some of that, and certainly the department. There is a lot of fear in general about what is coming. So in terms of the mental health impact, yes, we're starting to see it. But right now, a lot of the changes are tiered and meant to hit at a later time. So we're not seeing immediate changes, but there is a lot of fear.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reed?
I commend you for all your work, especially congratulations on your 50 years. That's huge. I'm going to kind of reframe a little bit of the questions that my colleagues have just asked, which is we're heading into, in September, a strategic planning session to look at our five-year plan. So beyond resources, or maybe more specific, what do you mean by resources? What can the Select Board do, both in high-impact, short-term, and long-term, that we should consider when we go to the drawing board for our strategic plan to help you and the many constituents you serve, I mean, across all the boards, you know, many different age groups? What can we do? What should we put into our strategic plan for you?
I would, you know, say that what this department does is remarkable, particularly when you look at other departments throughout the Cape. Some have only one staff member. And so what we are able to accomplish here through the Human Services, looking at outmigration and workforce and mental health, I think what we may be seeing from the federal level and down, I think there's going to be a greater need. I think there's going to be potentially tremendous outmigration from the Cape. And I think we're potentially going to see a loss of workforce. I think there's going to be laborers who are out of the market, and I think that will trickle down in terms of looking at the complete stressors that families are under, seniors are under. I know, again, wearing my day hat, we are seeing particularly a huge number of seniors, and Susie's department does a lot with seniors. One of the information points was they're starting to see far more 55 and up who are homeless. That's a growing population. And the number of seniors that we see at the Falmouth Service Center who can no longer live just on Social Security and stay in Falmouth is huge. So I think Susie's work in terms of homeless prevention and the age, the average age of the Falmouth population, that's going to be a concern, is the number of seniors who are potentially homeless.
I think it's wonderful that you have that Brazilian worker there, but has there been a recognition that people aren't coming forward because of fear? Is that a concern of the population?
Do you want, yeah, I don't know if you want us to say anything. Yes, Malaney has seen a tremendous amount. She has a great network. Do you want to add to that?
Yes, Malaney Kioato, who is our new social worker, does say that she's noticed not only in her work at the Community Health Center, as well as the hours here, that folks coming out to meet with her is a bit of a challenge. So she does a lot of work on Zoom. She uses the WhatsApp, and she's getting out into the community. She's going to be going to the Falmouth Service Center for hours on the days that she's with us to do some tabling and some outreach, and she's been putting up flyers in different locations around town. So yes, but she in general, mostly in her role at the Community Health Center, is recognizing that there is a lot of fear in the community, and people may be just deciding not to go to work, not to go to doctor's appointments, and things like that. So that is one of our, one thing that we want to focus on in the next couple of months, is getting her out into the community as much as possible, in the limited number of hours that we have her.
Could you both just identify yourselves while you're there?
Oh, sorry.
Because I don't think we did ask you to do that.
Ms. Delaney did, and...
I don't know.
Yeah.
Karen is the chair of the Human Services Committee, and then I am the director of the department.
Yep.
And we work very closely in our day-to-day work, as well as in the committee work, and rely heavily on the committee's advisement when we're talking about the different issues that we're seeing in our different roles in the community, as well as identifying whether or not there's other needs that we, as a committee, department, and town, want to look into, which is really where the both the Brazilian social worker hours came in, as well as this year's grant funding for the legal services for the immigrant population, which has been, has been great. Volunteer Attorney utilizes our office. They're from Community Action of Cape Cod and the Islands, and thankfully, fear is not keeping some residents from coming in and utilizing that service, and the amount of work that this volunteer attorney puts in to assisting an individual or a family in a vastly, you know, complicated paperwork system. He's got a table of papers and just walking folks through what they need to collect in order to, you know, apply for the appropriate visas and things like that. So again, that kind of came from dialogue at the committee level, and then the department, and then bringing it forward to town management.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Can our local immigration court be accessed remotely?
It's a good question. I'm not sure.
Because I just saw an article that the ICE policies have changed now, and they're going to be more active in immigration courts, and so that's a concern. So I wonder if there's a need to figure out a way to get that remote access if it's not already happening?
Probably have to come from the state, as far as it goes.
Sure, I have to ask Community Action. I wouldn't know that.
Okay.
I think it's a real, unique synergy between your committee and the department working so closely. You know, not all of the town committees are as connected to the departments that they work with, and you do a wonderful job, and thank you both, really. Anyone else?
Very proud to be part of Susie's...
Okay, there you go. All right, well, thank you very much. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Okay, we will now move to the Commission on Substance Use.
I think there's a PowerPoint that was given to them.
So arrows, yeah, or the mouse.
I'll just be right here, and I'll click the arrow. Or you can, if you want, it's right there.
Well, that was a tough act to follow. Good evening, Chairman Mascali and members of the Select Board. My name is Dennis Lyons, and I'm the chairman of the Falmouth Substance Use Commission. And I'm here tonight to report on the activities of our commission this past year. As you can see on the first slide, we are a commission of five members, and those include Samantha Bauer, Rick Corey, Rabbi Elias Lieberman, who's here in the audience, joining us tonight, myself. And we have a new member that just came before the board, I think, at your last meeting, Karina Armstrong, who's a physician and who is in addiction treatment field, which is a great benefit for our committee. And last, we have one of our members is stepping down, Beverly Costa-Ciabola. And Beverly has served seven and a half years on the commission. She's done a great job. She's an inspiration. She knows inside and out the issues surrounding substance use in the town, and unfortunately, she can't afford to live in Falmouth anymore, so she had to leave. She had to move out of town, and as a result of that, she couldn't no longer be on the commission. She said she'd like to continue to be involved, and she's just made great strides and contributions over the years, so I'd like to certainly recognize her tonight. Our staff liaison person, Susie Hoffman, and I can only say that the work of the commission depends heavily on Susie and her staff to manage our meetings and the necessary operation of our grant application and management process. Thank you, Susie. As you can see from our next slide, is this one here? Great. The Substance Use Commission's been busy, involved in many aspects of substance use prevention. The first is August 31st, which is Overdose Awareness Day. And again, Elias Lieberman is heading up the initiative there. And I don't know if you had a chance to read in the enterprise last week, but there was a story about that event. And essentially, it's recognition of people who have died from substance use, and it's an opportunity for their families to come forward in a public event. It's on the green. We have probably a crowd of 150 people. There are purple chairs, which are symbolic of the issue of substance use and the problem, and obviously, the issue with overdose and overdose awareness. Each family member has an opportunity to come forward with a picture, like a poster of their loved one, and tell a quick story about them. It's a very poignant event. It's, I've been involved in it now, this will be my third year, and I was, again, relatively new to this whole human service and this whole area, and it was very, very poignant to me and made an impact. So I would, if any of you would like to attend, we truly appreciate that. I think we were sending an official...
The commission was there.
Okay. The next is a distribution of what we call the Substance Use Cards. I don't know if you have one in your packet, but one of the things we did early on, when, again, when I was involved in the committee, and we're thinking about how we were going to spend abatement funds, and I'll get into that in a minute, but we heard over and over again from many people that they had a problem in the family, there was a substance abuse issue in the family, and they didn't know what to do. They didn't know who to turn to. They didn't know what was the resources that are available. How can they get treatment? How can, you know, people that, you know, they just had, do not have the background, if you will, and understand the problem. So we put together as a committee this card. We've distributed hundreds of these cards throughout the town and in various areas. And we are also working with the enterprise to have an insert, which will, again, look like this, and it's an opportunity for people, you know, put this aside, God forbid they need it, but the fact of the matter is, when you have the problem, is when you need to have something that's quickly accessible that you can get and then call for help. So that's been a big initiative. We're also looking at distribution of Nalox, Naloxone, Nalox boxes. We have distributed 536 doses around. I think we have a little over 20 locations. Naloxone saves lives. It's just as simple as that. The amount of people dying from substance use, from narcotics, is dramatically down, which is great news, primarily as a result of Naloxone and the availability of it. And I'll talk a little bit about that and our grants that we have funded, again, to facilitate the distribution of this drug. But again, it saves lives. It's one of the reasons why the number of overdoses has gone from the 20s only about three years ago, down to we had one overdose, I think, this past year. We still have a huge problem, you know, let me be clear, but this drug saves lives, and it's a big part of harm reduction in terms of the efforts of the commission. During our normal meetings, we meet once a month, we have guests come in. You know, we've really looked at, well, who are the people that we need to talk to to learn, as well as let them learn that the resources we can make available to help them. So we've met with the fire department, we've met with the police department, we've met with the principal of the high school, we've met with Sheriff Buckley, we've met with several nonprofit organizations. And part of it is for us to gather information and to understand better the problem, but also to let these people know that there are resources available that we've been able to accumulate through these abatement funds, and we'd like to help, you know, for example, the police department. When they bring a person to the emergency room after a drug overdose, they provide them with a packet that includes information, just sort of like this, but a little bit more elaborate. And so we've talked with them, and we hope that we'll be able to fund that effort through the police department. We've partnered with the AIDS Support Group, and they're the ones who actually distribute Naloxone, and they've been very active and involved, and we also have provided them funding through a grant. In March, we sponsored a documentary called It Happened Here. And it was produced in Falmouth. The person who was responsible for it is from Falmouth, and it tells a story of drug abuse on the Cape and in Falmouth in particular. And it's striking that it's young people, it's people that really didn't understand what they were getting into when they started the drug abuse issue. It also, I think, calls attention to the fact that drug abuse is a disease. It's not a behavior, and there is stigma associated with it. I'm a healthcare professional, I'm a pharmacist, and the healthcare industry really has to change. They really have to understand that these people need help. You know, I understand, like, the emergency room, it's difficult because they see the same people over and over and over again, and they become hardened to that fact, but the thing is, if we can provide Naloxone, if we can keep these people alive and get them into treatment, then there's an opportunity that will save their lives and turn their life around. This is an overview of the abatement funds. So far, we have received some 660, well, we have in our balance right now 666,461. And this money is coming from a variety of different participants through the Attorney General, and this is through a settlement, a national settlement, with all of these companies, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, McKesson, Cardinal, plus TiVo, Janssen, pharmaceutical companies. So they all have to pay into a national fund, and that fund is distributed, and then it's distributed by the state for each town. So Falmouth is receiving these funds. As I said, we have about $600,000 now, and by the time this program ends in 2039, we'll have received $2.5 million in these abatement funds. And what we've been doing is evaluating, how do we spend this money? What's the most efficient? What's the most effective strategy that we can work with? We're working with primarily nonprofit organizations. The state has provided us some guidelines in terms of how they expect us to spend the money. There's really four main issues. One is prevention, two is harm reduction, three is treatment, and four is recovery. Prevention, if we can prevent this nightmare from happening, if we can get and intervene and have people understand and learn the danger of these medications, or the danger of these drugs and substances, then it would just, you know, it's a nightmare that we can avoid. But once that happens, then we try to keep people alive through harm reduction, and if we can put the resources in place, like the Naloxone boxes, if we can distribute it more widely through bars and restaurants, and so, you know, harm reduction becomes the way to save lives temporarily, and then certainly treatment. We don't provide treatment, but we can provide, again, resources for people to learn how to get treatment and where to go. And then last, you know, you go through this whole process, you know, and you go to treatment, you're released from treatment, you need a place to live, you need a job, you need a license, you need all these basic things, because without that, these people spin back out of control, and it's a cycle that just happens over and over again. So recovery is a critical component of sort of the major initiatives that we're supporting through the abatement funds. This is an overview of the abatement fund grants. There were five companies last year, five organizations, I should say. We awarded a total of 118... We awarded a total of $118,500. And again, I would just say, Falmouth in comparison to other towns and communities is a, is a bit advanced. We, we had a great organization and meeting to determine through the community what the needs were. Through the Human Services Department, we developed an RFP process. We have an evaluation process. We awarded, as I said, these five organizations who provide a variety of things. The first year was largely focused on recovery, but there was some harm reduction as well. But nevertheless, we, we have the five in the first year. We reevaluated them this year, and we've approved all five of them for one more year, some with increased funding and, and others with level funding and some with less funding. But the, the process was, we received updates from these companies with progress reports, outcomes, information. There was reporting and there was an evaluation. And all of that was coordinated by the Human Services Department, which really made our lives a lot easier, I'll tell you that. And last, let's see. So basically, we reevaluated and approved the, the first five organizations and those are the, the awards. And then there were new grants and that we found new people who came to us with new ideas and new initiatives. And we provided that, those, that funding at that level from these different organizations. This year, we'll spend about 262,000 of, again, the 600,000 that we have in the bank. And we want to be judicious, we want to be careful and thoughtful and make sure that, you know, people aren't just writing us a letter saying, could you give us $50,000? There's a process and, and an evaluation process and an outcome process. last, where are we, where are we heading? We would like to add two more seats to the committee so that we have seven members. The committee is very active, and we think that more members could provide more perspective, more ideas and more people involved in the process. We're working with the library to develop a Falmouth Recovery, Recovery Corner at the library. And last but not least, a previous speaker is somebody that we'd really like to partner with because we think that some of the services that are provided in the, in the Falmouth Service Center, like transportation, support, and legal aid and, and things like that, which may not be necessarily worthy of a grant on their own, but if we could provide a general grant and they could manage the distribution of money, we think that that would be a huge successful initiative. So that's essentially what, what's going on with the Substance Abuse Commission.
Thank you.
I'll take.
Thank you for one very comprehensive report. Thank you. I, I have one question. Are those funds in a segregated fund?
Yes.
They are segregated? Okay. Figured as much. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
A question about, maybe Ms. Goldstone might know a little bit about this from your experience on the school committee. I wonder how much educational component there is to intervene with kids when they're in that seventh, eighth grade, because that's when they get started, I think, probably experimenting marijuana and so forth. I wonder if there could be a way to have an opportunity to just, you know, like the Scared Straight program with the, the kids that are starting to get into a little bit of trouble, they go visit a prison and they get an education. I don't know how you would identify or how it would happen.
Well, like anything, it's complicated. The, the, the school department has their curriculum, their, you know, their, their plan, are they're educating people. And to try to insert into that some kind of a curriculum about substance use and do it in an effective way in which there's an impact and, you know, because I, I remember the years of Dare, when, when it was, you know, how do we scare people? And, you know, quite frankly, it didn't work.
No.
And, you know, the, the, the thing about the movie that I had mentioned, the documentary, it was all young people. So if, if we could get, you know, a screening of that, maybe with, you know, different grades, middle school or early high school. So people would say, no, this isn't about some person, you know, in another country. This is about people in Falmouth, my age, that tell their story and how horrible their life has been since they got involved with drugs. So yes, I, I, prevention, to me, i- is really a critical component here. And we need to continue to, you know, that's why we're meeting with the school department, that's why we're meeting with different organizations, to find out what works and, and what should we really fund and put our, put our resources into. But I think prevention absolutely is a critical component.
Seems like you'd get a better bang for your buck in the long run if we could try to prevent it in the first place.
Well, exactly. It just avoids all that nightmare that happens afterwards. And you have homelessness, you have, you know, all of those things are part of this. They're either part of the drug abuse issue or they contribute to the drug abuse issue or they're, you know, they're interlocked.
Yeah.
And, and mental health. It's, they're all, it's a cycle of all the same thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for the incredible work that you're doing, a really important work.
Thank you.
It's a little bit of a, a sidetrack, I guess, from the, the core issue of substance use, but something I noticed actually in one of our proclamations that we read earlier tonight, and then I saw again in your mission statement and just wanted to raise is an issue of language and saying that we serve Falmouth citizens. Falmouth doesn't actually have citizens and we don't actually ask about immigration status when providing services. And so just thinking about the language that we use when we talk about who we're serving, that we have community members, we have residents, we have visitors. And I know the word has, for a very long time, been used in a very generic and well-intended way, but it can have different effects sometimes.
That, that.
So thinking about that wording in your mission, but I think a, a more broad reminder, because like I said, it's, it's now.
It's probably around almost 20 years.
I've noticed it two or three times tonight that we use that word casually and, and it's a word that we need to be a little bit more judicious with, maybe.
I totally agree. You know, we live in interesting times and we certainly don't want to contribute to the, you know, the problem that is.
As I said, not to single you out, just.
Thank you. Good comment.
Well taken. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to discuss and consider a vote to approve the application by Cafe Grounded LLC, DBA Cafe Grounded, at 281 Main Street, Falmouth, for a common victual license. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real briefly, I see the applicant is here this evening. The building commissioner approved and signed off on the floor plan, a copy of which is included in your packet tonight. Reviews by the fire rescue department, health department, and building departments were conducted and no objections or issues were identified. And a food service establishment permit was issued back on July 29th of this year.
Okay. Does anyone have any, would you like to say something, sir? Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Lucas Probst. I am the new owner of Cafe Grounded LLC. I'm just trying to get some more coffee in town.
That's what we need, a little more coffee.
Yeah. Walking distance. I worked for many years over at Anahou Mexican Bistro. I was their GM and so now I'm trying to do my own thing, go my own path, so.
Okay. Very good. Anyone have any questions of the applicant?
I'm interested to know what, what's going to set your cafe apart from the other coffee shops, because we do have a few.
Um, I, so there, I grew up going to many coffee shops and a few stood out to me every place that I lived. One in particular is called Bluefoot Cafe in Wareham, where the atmosphere is very inviting. There's going to be very specific specialty coffee. But what's going to set me apart, I guess, is the juice aspect of it. I went to Vella Juice Bar a lot when I lived over the bridge in Plymouth. And so that got me the idea of like a juice shop, like a fresh juice bar, so fresh fruit and stuff like that. So I think that's what got me to open the cafe.
Okay.
Is kind of like the juice aspect and then the coffee kind of was already part of me.
Okay. Interesting. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
Looking forward to trying the chai. Motion to approve the, the application by Cafe Grounded LLC, DBA Cafe Grounded, for a common victual license as presented.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on. Consider a request from Malim, I hope I pronounced that right, Peters, of Oversole Theater Collective for a waiver of the special event permit fee for the session concert at Peg Noonan Park on Saturday, 9/13/25. Mr. Renshaw, do you have something to?
I do, real briefly, Mr. Chair. The application was received and reviewed by the Internal Working Group for Special Events at its meeting back on July 24th of this year. And the working group recommended approval. Mr. Peters submitted a request for a waiver of the special event permit fee with the following points. The event is grant-supported and non-commercial, with funds directed to compensating artists and covering outreach, not generating any profit. The event is free and open to all, with no limitations on public access and no admission fee. The event intends to provide broad community benefit, including exposure to cultural traditions, public arts, and family-friendly entertainment in a central gathering space at Peg Noonan Park. And the event is part of a larger charitable and educational mission to increase community access to indigenous and underground cultural expressions through public outdoor programming. And, Mr. Chair, my office is recommending the Select Board consider approval of the request from Mr. Peters of Oversole Theater Collective for a waiver of the special event permit associated with this event in the amount of $25 for the session concert to be held at Peg Noonan Park.
Is the applicant here? Would you want, would you like to step up and just introduce yourself and? Hello, sit. Oh, my goodness.
That's what we, whoa, we did that.
I'm glad I asked.
Yeah.
We haven't had this kind of entertainment since the Steamship Authority.
Blowing out the speakers of the people who's home.
Definitely a showman. Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Malim Peters. I'm the artistic director of Oversole Theater Collective. We've been around since 1994. We've been doing stuff in Falmouth since 1994. A lot of what we were doing was actually guerrilla art, so this is new to us to actually apply for an application, because we were used to just popping up and doing it and looking out for law enforcement. Our, our most recent was accidentally, June 24th. My son did a performance in Peg Noonan Park. He thought that it was approved. He found out it wasn't, but we did the show anyway. People loved it, so, yeah, so he, he kept the tradition going. But nonetheless, we do a program called The Session. It's actually now called Soul on the Move. And what we do is pop up underground dancers at parties around Massachusetts. We've been doing them in the parks in New Bedford all summer. We do them in Boston, in the Boston Common. We've done it in the Cambridge Common. We've done it up in Oak Square.
You might want to stay closer to the mic to make sure people at home can hear you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So basically, we've been doing these pop-up parties around Massachusetts. We play music just like this and the reaction is just like what happened in the room. You know, for the first time, I saw Mike Shoulders relax and he sat back. You know, I saw, I saw a smile form on people's face. And this is why we do this. Because this music, this type of music, this type of vibe just makes people feel better. And so we've been doing this around town and it's the effect of people walk by and are walking by and suddenly feeling like this. And we want to do that here in Falmouth. And we did receive a grant from the Falmouth Cultural Council to make it possible. The grant, as, as was mentioned, doesn't actually cover the fee that we usually get paid to do this, but we want, but it's important because we have longstanding interaction with this community. We've been working with the Falmouth Cultural Council with St. Barnabas. We've been working with the Falmouth Cultural Council, with the Falmouth Art Center. And we want to continue that type of thing.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
And especially do it after tourist season, because that's when everything suddenly goes dead. And we still have a community here that wants to feel good.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So would anyone like to make a motion with respect to the waiver?
Absolutely. I would make a motion to approve the request from Malim Peters of Oversole Theater Collective for a waiver of the special event permit fee for the session to be held at Peg Noonan Park on Saturday, September 13th, 2025. Rain date, September 14th, correct?
Right.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you and good luck.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your.
Well, you waited, you waited a long time for the waiver, but at least you got some advertising.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Moving right along.
All right, good luck.
Good night.
Thank you.
We are here to consider a vote to reclassify the part-time administrative clerk to the accounting office position to a full-time position. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to start it out and I may lean on Assistant Town Manager and our HR Director to help me through. So as you all know, workload throughout town and various departments is increasing. Our accounting office is certainly no exception. There's a note in your board packets tonight that in FY '26, this position, the accounting, the administrative clerk in the accounting office, the position is on target to process 1,500 more invoices than it did in 2023. So tremendous amount of growth is the point. The current part-time administrative clerk in the accounting office position is going to be vacant due to a recent promotion of the incumbent within the finance department. So we're requesting to advertise the vacant position as a full-time position, again, due to the tremendous increase in workload. Current part-time position is already benefit-eligible for, at 24 hours a week. Therefore, the town is already obligated to pay for the employer portion of the health insurance premium and the employer portion of the pension for the position. In an effort to use the town's wage dollars more efficiently and more effectively, we're, we are currently minimizing the number of benefit positions under 37 and a half hours per week because they are not in efficient use of the town's appropriation and resources. Because the town has already required to pay the employer portion of the health insurance premium and the pension plan, the cost of reclassifying this position from the current 24 hours per week to full-time at 37 and a half hours per week is the cost of the additional hours and it's net estimated FY '26 cost of $9,600. So again, Mr. Chair and Select Board, based upon the tremendous amount of growth and always striving to be more efficient and effective at what we do, we're requesting that the board consider approving, moving and reclassifying this position from part-time admin clerk in the accounting office to full-time position. And with the assistance of the Assistant Town Manager and HR Director, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think it looks like something that is, is necessary, given the workload currently. Sounds like a reasonable request.
Very reasonable, given the size of our budget, the amount of things that you have to pay and the growth experienced. This is very low money and I think it's worth the motion almost immediately.
I have a question. Does it go to 40 hours or?
Thirty-seven and a half is what we're proposing.
Is that typical full-time? Okay.
You want to speak to that, sir? I'm sorry.
This position is part of the Ask Me Unit A Union, and those clerical positions are at 37 and a half hours per week for full-time status.
Thank you. Is that typical for, like, a lot of town employees or is that just that?
Yes. Yeah. It is for a lot of town employees. Well, so the public works, folks work a 40-hour week, but it is pretty typical for office workers, if, if I could use the term that way, and that's not a great term, but, you know, white, white-collar jobs in, in this community and many others, it, it tends to be below, it's often, not always, below 40.
Okay. Thank you. Interesting.
Okay. Well, it sounded like there was a motion there by Mr. Reed.
Sure. Motion to reclassify the part-time administrative clerk to the accounting office position to full-time status.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a, in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Next matter, update on urine diversion initiative and consider a vote to amend the internet, the intermunicipal agreement with Massachusetts Alternative Septic, Septic System Test Center. Getting late.
Don't twister.
Yes, it is. Mr. Renshaw or Mr. John? Yes, it is. Mr. Renshaw or Mr. Johnson Staub? Someone going to give us a little context here?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm going to refer to Assistant Town Manager Johnson Staub. He's done the lion's share of the work on this. Mr. Peter?
Thank you. So, we have significant progress to report on this urine diversion initiative. So, as you know, we've been working for well over a year now to, on the feasibility of implementing a pilot project with the intent that perhaps that pilot project might lead to urine diversion becoming one of the tools that the town uses to meet our water quality goals with respect to our nitrogen-impaired estuaries. And there's a lot to it. It's complicated, and there are a lot of regulatory hurdles, and no one else in the country is doing it. So, as I said, we have made some really good progress. There's, as I think you are aware, there's a small working group comprised of representatives from the Falmouth Ponds Committee, the Falmouth Ponds Advisory Committee, the Water Quality Management Committee, myself, and representatives from the Massachusetts Alternative Septic System Test Center. So, the path forward for the State Plumbing Board, we have a better idea of what that is. Unfortunately, it's going to be more onerous than we had hoped, because it's going to be a per-household variance for each household that has a urine diversion fixture in it, at least for the first pilot project. But at least we know what the path is. With respect to the collection of the nitrogen and disposal of the nitrogen, Mastech has done, and Mastech is the acronym for that very long-winded county agency that we, Bob and I have stumbled our way through twice, they have made great progress there. There are two companies that are now commercially operating, collecting urine from households across the region and turning it into fertilizer that they sell. So, they have expressed an interest in taking the urine collected through a pilot project. The pilot project will have to, expects to have to pay for that collection, but there is a place for it to go. The perhaps most complicated piece is the Department of Environmental Protection approvals that are required. And again, progress has been made, and I'm going to go into a little bit of painful detail here, because it speaks to the next steps for the urine diversion initiative. So, after months of back and forth, the DEP, Mass Department of Environmental Protection, has determined that urine diversion systems will be permitted as innovative alternative technologies which do not claim nitrogen load reduction at the site of urine collection on an average-per-household basis. So, the, and this is credited in terms of the wetlands permits that the town will ultimately have to get for each of its 14 nitrogen-impaired watersheds. Rather than those, the way other innovative alternative septic systems are credited, or sewer systems are credited, on a average-per-household basis, urine diversion installations will be credited based on urine collected at each household and measured, and then the nitrogen calculation of the nitrogen actually collected at each household. And while that is, you know, in some ways makes it more challenging to put together the plan, and we can't just say, you know, "Okay, if we're going to do 100 installations, we know how much nitrogen credit we're going to get," the positive aspect of that is that we will not need to have a, in order to get DEP approval for the nitrogen credit scheme, we won't have to have 50 installations operating for three years to determine what those averages might be per household. So, a pilot project, therefore, can be scaled down considerably in terms of testing, do these systems work, do people want to do them. We can do a smaller pilot project, a less expensive pilot project. So, that's one piece of good news. Another piece of good news is that Mastech got a grant to do that pilot project. So, Mastech received a grant of 416, about $417,000 from DEP to install 25 urine diversion systems in Falmouth. And that, that goes a long way to funding the project. However, Mastech has identified some additional needs that will help move the project more quickly and make the project ultimately more attractive for the homeowners. So, Mastech has requested that the town provide an additional $119,500 toward that pilot project. So, we, and it, not coincidentally, we have just over that amount available from existing appropriations. And we are recommending this evening that the town amend its intermunicipal agreement with the Massachusetts Alternative Septic System Test Center for an additional scope of work to support that pilot project for that dollar amount.
And that's the scope of work? That's on the attached dated July 30, 2025 update?
That's correct.
That's what we're talking about. Now, I had asked a question that the IMA refers to, an original scope of work and an amendment, which we don't have before us, but I think the conclusion was this kind of supersedes?
Yeah, it's in addition to. So, their, Mastech's goal is to close out the scope of services under the current IMA over the next several months. But there might even be overlap to get started with the grant, with the pilot project, and some of the aspects that we would be funding with this grant project. But the distinction between the two is, one was to get us to get through the feasibility hurdles to determine whether it made sense for the town to fund a pilot project. We're now closing in on that, and this next phase is to actually support that pilot project.
And the company that's doing it, is that the one up in Bennington, Vermont?
That is one of the two.
That we've heard about all along?
Rich earth, black earth?
Black earth.
Black earth. Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Brown?
So, to clarify about the finances, even though we're going to increase the funding for this part of it, we're going to save significantly, because we're not doing the program.
Exactly right. The, we were anticipating spending well over a million.
So, the contract also will be adjusted down, because they're not doing the second half?
No, they are going to continue that work, because we don't, you know, we don't have the final approvals from the Plumbing Board. We don't have the final approvals from DEP, although we're getting there. And there's still some more work to put the participant agreements together. So, all of the work is still needed.
Okay, it just seems as if the scope of work is reduced rather than increased, but maybe I'm just not seeing what?
So, the scope of work that was previously approved, all of that still needs to be done. The scope of the pilot project is reduced from 50 households to 25.
But we didn't fund that yet? Is that?
The pilot project is not funded.
That's right. Okay, that's what I'm, that's where we're saving later.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, of course.
It says that these pilot projects will be in nitrogen-sensitive areas. Would that be only in the estuary areas, or can it be in any nitrogen-sensitive area that we determine, like anybody that lives next to a pond, or a river, or stream?
So, the DEP requirement is that it has to be in one of the 14 impaired watersheds.
That's tough, because we're going to be sewer-ing them. And are we going to have to think about offering an exemption to the sewer project if the?
Yeah, that's a great question, and one that, that we're going to be bringing ultimately to the Board of Health for determination.
Determination. I would love to see these be in alternate areas, like in Hatchville and somewhere, you know, where sewer-ing is not planned.
Yeah, that's, the working group is leaning in that direction, to say that the urine diversion installations would be outside of future sewer areas, but within the impaired watersheds.
Or maybe it could be in critical proximity to any water body, maybe though?
Well, it can't, because we don't make those rules under the grant. The DEP set those rules.
We've got a lot of areas that are, IAs are going to be required.
Yeah, we do.
And this would be permitted as an IA.
Right, right. And we're subject, you know, regardless of the merits of what you're suggesting, the Mastech has a grant from the DEP, and we have to operate within those confines. Okay.
Well, it's exciting progress.
Yes, yes, and?
Yeah, this is, this is good. Anyone?
I would make a motion to approve the amendment to the intermunicipal agreement with the Massachusetts Septic System Technology Center as submitted.
Second.
Third.
Okay, we have a motion in a second by Mr. Reed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, well done. That was a lot of work.
Okay.
Progress.
Discuss and consider the approval of a scope of responsibilities for a licensing commission. We're going to turn it over to council. Mr. Renshaw?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And again, it's indicated in your packet, but this is a follow-up discussion from the January 6th meeting, where we first had the discussion with Select Board. But I have asked Town Council to be prepared to discuss kind of what remains to be done and decided perhaps this evening, so that she can move forward.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Last item of the evening, wrap up some business.
Do you have any music to go with it? You asked.
I could whistle for a few bars. A little dehydrated, so maybe next time, I promise. So, I gave you quite a bit of information in a memo and also in the agenda summary to get us sort of up to speed from where we were the last time, because it's been a few months since I've been before you to talk about this. But just very briefly, the exercise here, and why we're having this conversation at all, is because there have been two charter commission committees that have recommended that the town create a licensing commission that would shoulder some of the administrative burden of issuing certain licenses that this board issues, so that the Select Board can focus more time on policy creation. And our conversations recently, over the past year or so, since we've been doing this, have been about what is the, what is the scope, what are the scope of the responsibilities that could be ceded and turned over to this licensing commission? We, there's a whole host of licenses that this board issues, either through, after a hearing, or a lot of them are done purely administratively through the town manager's office, that you may not even consider or have really a full, full understanding of the work that goes into it. A lot of them are done really just on a consent agenda or something like that. But then, there are the bigger ticket items, where you have to hold a public hearing, and you have to have people come in and talk to you. And then, there's the added time consumption that goes into the enforcement aspect of it. And that's where your job gets really difficult, where you have to call people back in when they're behaving badly and get them to behave better. And what, that's a very difficult task that you have, to do that in a public setting and try to get compliance with the law. Here, where we are right now, the status of what this looks like is the proposed home rule petition is pretty pared down. It's just a fraction of your licensing responsibilities. Right now, it just includes common victuallers, which are the licenses that any restaurant needs to have in order to serve food, inholder licenses, and alcohol license, licenses. And those are on-premise and off-premise. They're one-day licenses, and they are everything from just the wine and beer to all alcohol and to all of the seasonal licenses. Right now, the home rule petition does not include entertainment licenses. I think it should. I think entertainment licenses go hand-in-hand with the rest of the, with the rest of that industry. So, I think that is something for the board to consider. What's not in here are things like dock licenses or used car dealership licenses. Dock licenses are sort of their own animal, sort of like aquaculture licenses. But I do think where we are right now in our discussion, it's important to focus on whether or not you want to do this, and to start small and maybe get bigger. So, since I was here last, I did pare this down to just those licenses that we talked about. I did also include an additional provision that would allow the town to add additional licensing responsibilities to the commission by bylaw, if things worked out okay. And somewhere down the road, the board wanted to foist off some more responsibility onto the commission.
So, we could by bylaw add different types of licenses going forward? Is that what you're saying?
That's what, that's what I'm proposing here in the home rule petition. I believe that that is something that the legislature could grant, and it would give flexibility. And also, where I think that there's some hesitation from the board to cede this responsibility, it would be a way for the board to sort of dip its toe in the water of creating a licensing commission and starting off with something. And then, if it goes well, you can add more.
See, I read that as meaning that we could add particular powers to the commission, but I'm not sure that it, I mean, in my reading of it, it doesn't seem to imply that we could also increase the types of licenses, which I agree with you, I'd love to be able to do by bylaw. And if you feel that that's sufficient, you know, I defer to you. But in reading it, I didn't, I didn't interpret that to mean we could also by bylaw add dock licenses and used car dealers and so forth.
So, I can look at the wording of that. I, of course, think that that's what it says, because that's how I wrote it. But if you have different language that you want to give me, we're not quite at the wordsmithing part of the, of the story right now, but I am making a note to revisit the language.
Some other members may have. I will tell you, from the very beginning, my concern has always been is whether or not the board, the Select Board should retain some power with respect to appeals from that, from that licensing commission.
Right.
As it stands, without that, someone who was dissatisfied with the decision would have to go to court in order to appeal that.
And that was my next point that I was just about to make. I reviewed that. I consulted with outside counsel. I consulted with some of my colleagues, quite a few of my colleagues, actually. And to a person, they all said that they don't believe the legislature would grant that. And the reason why is because one of the things that the state legislature is going to look at when they're reviewing this, and whether to approve it or not, is whether there's already an existing scheme that's so comprehensive that this would attempt to preempt part of the statute. Here, there is a robust appellate process already that is intertwined with state regulation and with state law, where the appeal goes, right now, how it goes, is if someone is dissatisfied with the decision of the Select Board, it first goes to the ABCC. And I didn't mention that part of it when I was here in January. I omitted a level of review. So, it first goes to the ABCC. There's an opportunity to have a second administrative hearing. If the applicant is still unsatisfied, they have an opportunity to take a 30A appeal to the Superior Court and then go up through the court system. I do not see a way that the state legislature is going to allow the Select Board to insert itself as yet another layer of appellate review in what's already a really strong and thorough appellate system.
So, but, I mean, if, if we felt strongly, and I don't know if I let anyone else chime in, but if we felt strongly and wrote it that way, would, would they come back and just say, you know, get rid of that and go forward with the rest of it? Or, in other words, is it worth trying? Because I, I would like to try to keep some control over that process. I think the select board is closer to it.
I know, I think it's a bad idea. I think that with this exercise, this board first and foremost has to make a decision about whether you want to let go of control and have it be independent. And you have to look at something like the planning board or the ZBA or the Conservation Commission. These are all analogous. You do not have any kind of appellate review for those regulatory decisions. A licensing commission is exactly the kind of regulatory board that the CONCOM, the ZBA and the planning board is. And if this licensing commission is created, it will be independent and it will have direct review to the ABCC.
Would it be advisable to think about more than five members as far as the composition?
Um, I, I think you could do that. I wouldn't go more than seven.
No, I would think seven, at least you have a little better opportunity to make quorum and so forth.
Exactly. Would it, would you do seven full-time members or five and two?
Maybe some alternates like the ZBA.
Alternates. I think there's room to do that, absolutely.
Okay, those are my points. Mr. Brown?
I do feel like the entertainment license should be included in here. And I don't remember that we intentionally excluded that. I think maybe that should be added. And then if we do come up with a short-term rental bylaw, would that fall under the inholder? Would we have to add language if we intended that to be managed by the licensing commission as well?
So my understanding of where the short-term rental group is, is that the, there would be a general bylaw where a permit is issued, not a license.
Okay.
And it would be a permit kind of like a hocker peddler license or more akin to those permits that are more administrative than anything. These licenses are, there are stronger property interests where you actually have a financial interest in the license that creates not just a financial interest, but a, a property right. It, it's just a, a different kind of, of property right than what the short-term rental permit would be. And so I, I don't, I'm not aware of any other licensing commission that issues licenses to short-term rentals. I'm trying to think off the top of my head, at least not in this kind of capacity. But with the way that the home role petition is written right now, there would be a door that could be opened down the road to migrate that to the licensing commission, depending on what that looks like. We, we really don't know what that short-term rental is going to look like right now.
Okay.
Question.
Got one more over here.
Colin?
Go ahead.
So just looking at the, the control mechanism, if I'm hearing it that we don't have the power of appeal, our poli, our power actually comes in the policy setting of town policies that we set as a board that the licensing commission would work within. Is that correct?
So you would have the same kind of control or authority that you do over the ZBI. I think that's a really good example here where you have power of appointment and removal of the members. And you would have a liaison to the commission, so there would be open lines of communications about expectations. And also, just in general, this board sets the tone. And there's, that's, you know, part of why we're doing this exercise, that you, you can focus on that tone.
I appreciate that. I think community trust, transparency is key to this, especially as, to make decisions defensible so that community trust stays intact is, is goal, is good. You know, wherever we go with this, sometimes legal lease does not make things clear. So as we go down this path, I think of making sure that the legal authority is clear about who is approving what and how. The roles are complementary wherever possible so that a community member who is applying for something or appealing something knows the responsibilities between the two is important. Communication is key. I think that's more of an implementation than a policy, but I don't know if it's communication in the form of an MOU or something, just so that the two bodies, like you say, we have the power of appointment removable, but also setting the tone. I think it's also comes in communication. So I don't know what it looks like, but some level of MOU or how we're going to work together to make sure that, you know, we do have that transparency and trust. But it also lays it out a little bit cleaner for other people is, you know, based on some of the licensing commissions I pulled up just as background, I think that was key in some of the good ones that I've seen.
You know, it, it just occurred to me also, we're creating a new licensing, class of licenses right now for cultural, cultural entities. And in the course of doing that, I am taking this opportunity to revise the regulations and give them an overhaul. And that is, I, I expect to have a draft for you soon. I mean, the cultural licenses sooner than, sooner than later, and the whole regulations within the next few months. But I think that this board should look at that project as, as a way to set a baseline for a new commission where you are giving them the rules that you want them to administer. So they are starting off with your rules.
Yeah, and it's clear. I mean, we got it. So I guess further down the path, not only the rules, but also, I guess, the, the feedback. For me, it's something I've always found to be very useful is that regular communication protocol. I think that we can build in, whether it be regular reporting, quarterly or annual, kind of a joint meeting between the two, just to make sure that, you know, we're hitting our target, because this is something new.
And they'll all be new too.
Yeah.
They'll need your guidance.
We want to make sure we're getting it right so that we can adjust as we need to within the laws of Massachusetts. You know, what you introduced at the beginning of this was, at first I was ready to go with, yeah, let's put in that layer of, of, of appeal. Understanding now that that's not possible, okay, well then let's focus on where we can have an effect. So I appreciate the work that you've put on this or into this, and I think we're heading in the right direction and I fully support a licensing commission here because I think while it is important, we, we do as an oversight and a governing body here or policymaking body, we have some really big things in front of us. And to alleviate that time in your opening comments, I think that's where we need to go. But I will acknowledge some comments made early on when I met with, before pulling papers, the, the work doesn't go away, so I want to acknowledge that, that work stays. It just, it, it relieves some time here, so we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way, so there's not anything duplicative, because we can't afford that on the town staff right now. And we're already at capacity adding another, we're, I'm hoping that this adds efficiency and effectiveness and doesn't take away.
And I'm hoping that that will come with the revisions to the regulations that I'll present to the board also. The, the administration will have a stake in this. They will have a role in creating efficiencies by identifying the places where the regulations don't work and being able to request things that they've always wanted to have in the regulations. So I'm hoping that that will do exactly what you're, what you're hoping.
So we just asked a lot of stuff. What are the next steps here?
The next steps, the next immediate step is for you to give me direction about what you'd like for me to, what you want me to, what revisions you want me to make to this home role petition. First, I know that Chair Mascali wants me to look at that, and I will look at this language specifically at section E that says, "Assign any additional licensing powers," and it's that phrase.
That's, that's the phrase.
I'm gonna, I'll look at it.
That, I was looking.
I see exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
So I have that. I will incorporate entertainment licenses and anything else that you want.
Two alternates.
Two alternates.
I like the two alternates. And, and I would just say, I feel like entertainment probably captures it, but I would like to think of this from the applicant's perspective as well and ensure that we're not creating a system where they need to hit multiple boards to get what they need. So to the extent that, as you said, entertainment and alcohol, wine and beverage licenses go hand in hand, event permanent, like making sure that, that this body becomes, to the extent possible, a one-stop shop for event organizers and businesses seeking licenses to, to also create efficiency, I mean, both for staff, but, but for those in the community taking advantage of this or, or trying to do things in the community. And otherwise, I, I think I would just echo or kind of build on some of what Mr. Reed was saying, that, that I think it's, it's imperative on us as this works its way through the process. We can't wait for the commission to be in place and there to be fewer things on our agenda to start looking at the, the regulations and the, the policy around these, making sure that that's really in a good place to hand off. I think we actually, you know, to your point with the analogy, I think we heard that in our joint meeting with the, the ZBA earlier this year, right? That need for really clear, what, what are the ground rules? What is the vision? What are we aiming toward? And how do we do that together and make sure that, that we've set the, the right guardrails for the, the commission to really be successful?
I'm gonna, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. One last thing, it's separate but related, which is, you know, this came out of a bylaw revision suggestion by the bylaw review committee, right?
Charter review.
Charter review. Thank you, charter review. Under previous town manager, I think there was a, I've, I've come to understand, I don't know if it's actually true or not, that there was like an efficiency and effectiveness study done as well. Do we know about anything like that, that this could align with? Because I'm just thinking of, to what Madam Vice Chair said, I would hate that we're going to be adding in more red tape. We're just trying to delegate at this point, not add more things to the end user. But I'm just wondering if that study still exists that we can dust off?
We'll, we'll search for it. I, I'm not aware of any, any, any efficiency study specific to the, the.
Not, not specific to this, but yeah, well, to.
So I know, I know over the years, there have been operational effectiveness studies done.
Maybe that's.
Other departments, for instance, we just recently did one with emergency communications, but I'm not aware of one that was done.
The closest I could, there, I, I believe there was one for the, the, what we now call the Department of Community Development, which was not one at the time.
Okay.
That may be the closest to it.
Okay.
It was not a town-wide efficiency.
Okay. I appreciate the, the desire to find input on that. I guess I wasn't looking or thinking so much about a, a study, but simply the lived, worked experience of town staff, the special events committee, like we're, we're giving you input, but I would love for them to also have a look at what the, the purview is, to be able to say, actually, this license is one that always comes along with those, should we consider putting that in there to make sure, because to your point, we don't necessarily see all of those that are going through administrative review or that sort of thing, just to make sure that we're, we're not accidentally making it harder for somebody.
So when we say entertainment licenses, are we also talking about events on public property like the banchel and?
I think we need to take maybe another look at the entertainment regulations with respect to that particular issue, you know, as far as getting the regulations exactly the way we want them so that the commission would, 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 as counsel points out, have a clear path as to what they're supposed to do.
Well, my question is, are we gonna, is the licensing authority, a licensing commission going to focus on license, entertainment licenses for private business and we retain purview over town property and town events? Or are we going to give that all, I'm just looking to clarify what, where we're headed with the.
So license, entertainment licenses aren't issued, one of the criteria for issuing them isn't the status of the property, whether it's private or public. It more has to do with whether there's admission for the event, whether there's alcohol or food, whether there's already an existing license of some other sort at the, at the, at the venue. It doesn't matter whether it's private or public. So I think the way to answer your question is that if there's any kind of entertainment, it's reviewed by the special, the special event working group, and perhaps the special event working group has to come within the ambit of the licensing commission, if for no other reason than if you look at the policy for the special event working group, it references the issuance of entertainment licenses. It's a delegation of your authority to issue licenses. So I think it would have to come under the umbrella.
So they would all go into that?
Okay.
All the more reason to go to the working group and say, what, what am I missing? Yep.
I, I will say, I'm not, you know, I'm not yet there that I'm in full support of, of the licensing commission, but I appreciate your taking the comments and moving it forward. But I'm, I may not be in support of it at the end of the day, but I can be, I can be swayed. We are magically only five minutes behind schedule here, I think. So we are fast approaching the nine, 10 mark, but anyway.
You should table a nine or two every time.
Well, we could certainly, certainly do that. So I guess the next item is discuss and consider a vote to amend the select board 2025 meeting calendar. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a copy of the currently approved, board-approved 2025 calendar included in your packets. As you all know, traditionally, the board meets twice each month, typically on Mondays unless there's a conflict with a holiday or religious day of observance. The currently approved calendar attached to the packet this evening lists two meetings in the month of October, those being October 20th and October 27th. The last meeting scheduled for the month of September is the 29th of September. Sakot, am I pronouncing that correctly? I hope. Sakot, thank you very much, is observed on Monday, October 6th. Mr. Chair and Select Board, in order to reduce the number of days between the September 29th meeting date and the current scheduled October 20th date, Spence suggested that the board consider adding a third meeting date of October 7th. I've had a conversation with Chair Mascali about this kind of extended period between meetings and the, the end of September and the first one in October. So the recommendation is to consider voting to amend the 2025 calendar by adding an additional meeting date in October, that being October 7th, which is a Tuesday.
I think we did this last year for, for, there was a gap and I think we added.
I think there was one instance of adjustment.
On the Tuesday as well, so certainly precedent for it. And, you know, I certainly think it's a good idea. I think there's just a little too much time between that last meeting in September and the first meeting in October, so.
But this doesn't really change that, right?
Yeah, no, we would be holding a meeting on October 7th, which currently we would not be.
Rather than waiting until October 20th is the current scheduled first meeting date in October.
The Jewish holiday on October 6th.
We'd be wanting, adding one on the 27th, I, I thought.
No, so currently we have October 20th and the 27th. This would, this would add, I'm sorry, would add October 7th, a Tuesday date, a third meeting date in October.
Yeah, we'll actually have four out of five weeks.
Oh, I see. It closes the gap between the last meeting and September.
So what's in the calendar is actually the existing and the, the other one's not.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. So we'll have two weeks in a row, we'll have a week off, we'll have two weeks in a row, three weeks in a row, one, two, three weeks in a row, and then skip a week in town meeting.
Is. Right, because it would be three successive meetings, because the first of November is also a select board meeting.
Is that designed because?
I'm not sure why we have a meeting on the 27th.
On October 27th?
Yeah.
Is there a pre-town meeting?
I mean, it may have something to do with the calendar for town meeting, but.
No, because the town meeting is on the 17th. No, because the town meeting is on the 17th, and we're meeting on November 2nd or 3rd.
Did we add that because of the gap earlier?
It might have been.
And maybe we can substitute and do October 7th and.
Skip the 27th?
The 27th? Or we can have an intense October and are we, do we have strategic planning sessions planned? Would it be useful to have that slate of one, two, like five, six meetings kind of in a row in October?
Potentially, it's actually part of my update this evening. So it could potentially having, having another meeting date in October, November, a workshop. It would be a workshop, not a, not a regular meeting for the strategic plan.
Let's hold off for, until our next meeting so we can, because I'm just looking, and I didn't remember seeing it this way, but you know, what we might be doing is maybe rather than meeting on the 7th, look at the 14th of October, which would be two weeks.
It's a Tuesday, but because of a holiday.
Monday's Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Former CPA director.
And then whether or not we're supposed to meet on the 20th, but.
Administrator, not director.
I don't remember it being quite that way, to be honest, when I looked at it the last time.
So are you suggesting we table the issue until we have a better understanding of our strategic planning schedule as well?
Sure. This is the calendar that was approved back in December.
Yeah, so this is the way it is. I think, you know, we're kind of constrained in September because we've got the meetings that relate to town meeting. And we have to have them on those dates, and you have Rosh Hashanah and Labor Day, so. But let's.
If anything, I mean, it seems like for today, rather than have three in a row, the 20th, the 27th, and the 3rd, wouldn't we pluck the 27th out and tentatively pencil in the 7th and then see how it goes?
Well, that's. Yeah. I think we just maybe need to look at it at our next meeting, just in light of that. I don't think there's any urgency, but I think, I think we're missing one meeting, maybe, you know, earlier in the month of October, like you say, and then see whether we need that meeting on the 27th. Table that. All right, minutes. Is anyone prepared to move the minutes for July the 28th?
So moved.
I'm gonna fess up that I didn't read them and abstain.
I had one thing that I noticed that's not super important, but.
We can certainly table it if you like. I mean, I think we're pretty well caught up on minutes, so.
I didn't write it down, but there was one little correction I wanted to suggest.
In light of Ms. Goldstone's.
Yeah, we can wait.
We can wait. Okay, we'll table that and go now.
Just don't forget till next year.
Now we're.
That's probably how they get put aside.
Fast approaching the town manager's supplemental report.
Two quick updates. Well, an update and a, and a good news story, an attaboy. So we just discussed the strategic planning workshop. The Chair and Vice Chair, Assistant Town Manager and I have had some discussions about planning a multi-session review, overview of overhaul, perhaps, of our strategic plan. I think certain sections need some work. So my report is that today, and I want to thank Assistant Town Manager for lining this up. You reached out to his contacts and we identified a few potential consultants that would lead this. I think it's important that somebody from the outside come in and kind of facilitate this versus, you know, myself or Peter trying to facilitate and participate at the same time. So best practice, like we talked about months ago, is to have an outside consultant. We're in initial discussions with such a group. We're looking at currently September 20th, which is a Saturday. So we haven't penned that in, but I would ask you all to pencil that in, Saturday, September 20th. And right now, Peter and I are working with this consultant to develop a scoping document, and we're hoping to have that by the end of the week. The other, well, the good news attaboy story, it was last week, and I'm gonna ask Peter to correct me if I misstate anything, but last week, our facilities director, Greg Endicott, reported that we had, as you all know, we've got kind of an ongoing unfortunate saga with regards to the air conditioning in the library. It was last week that I think one of the, they were doing some routine maintenance checking, the facilities personnel, in the morning and noticed an odd noise. It turned out to be a bearing in one of the AC units that had gone bad. When they took it apart, they noticed that, well, number one, two things, the bearing had to be replaced, so they immediately ordered that part. They also noticed the shaft of the AC unit was, was damaged as a result. So the good news attaboy story, and I'm really impressed by the kind of collaborative effort between facilities and our fleet maintenance, they basically machined a new shaft or repaired the shaft. Otherwise, and this is the important part, we were looking at at least a week, perhaps even longer, of shutdown. If that piece of the AC unit had gone down, it would have required to shut the library down while that part was ordered. So because of the collaboration and the spirit of cooperation and teamwork between two divisions within the DPW, working with the library department, we were able to avoid that shutdown. So just want to give kudos and attaboy to the facilities, got people, personnel, staff, and fleet maintenance as well.
Nice.
Job well done.
Good job.
And that's all I have.
My facilities team might cringe at this, but if you ever get stuck and you need a last minute or an emergency, you can always call us at HUI because we have quite a bit there, and we might be able to loan you something, help you machine something. We're community partners, so.
Nice.
Appreciate that offer. Any Select Board reports?
I would report that I attended the waterways committee this past week, and there was a big turnout of folks, as you probably saw in the enterprise, from Madeline Road section, and they were petitioning for dredging their waterway. And boy, the dredging requests are, there's quite a few. I don't think we can really ever pay for them all, but we gotta start thinking about it and keep it in the back of our minds because apparently people can't even get through their boats, and it's been a long time since the dredging's been done.
I think maybe we should have an agenda item in the future to discuss dredging, how we go about it, how, how much it costs, and what the permitting situation is. I think it would be good to have that as a discussion in the future, because it is coming up more and more apparently.
It is, yeah. And it's challenging, and it's a years-long, it's a multi-year process to get a place, you know, to get an approval, and then once you do, then you gotta fund it. So it's just, it's something that really has to be a long-range plan. Another thing, I spoke with Dan Gessen today, and you've probably heard that the Assembly is considering promoting or voting for a additional transfer, real estate transfer.
Real estate transfer.
Yeah. And now, I guess the idea is that it should really be a collaborative, countywide approach, including Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket. Maybe if we're all on the same page, asking for the same thing, maybe we'll have a better chance to get it, rather than individual towns seeking on their own.
But it also might delay it, you know, as well, I'm afraid, to get everybody, you know, I'm just saying. I mean, I don't know where in Nantucket is on it, but.
I don't either.
You know. But, yeah, I know that there's an effort to make it a countywide transfer tax.
Yeah.
There's something to be said for that, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
I will just report that I attended the Bike and Pedestrian Committee meeting last week. They are considering holding a listening session, you know, to discuss some of the issues. I think they've advised the town manager that they're thinking about putting something on to deal with some of the issues for pedestrians and bikers down at the Steamship Authority. You know, when we had the meeting, you know, I said that I thought another forum where they weren't constrained by the time and constraints that we had at the Select Board would be something that's worthwhile, and I think that that's a good thing if they're able to pull it off. I also attended the Council on Aging meeting, and glad to hear that they're considering extending the hours a couple of days during the week, and I think that's, you know, that's a real good improvement as well, at least on a trial basis anyway, to see what the, what the response is. So that's all I have.
Pleased to report that I inadvertently, yet successfully, attended the Resilient Woods Hole community workshop. Just was passing by, and then it was like, oh, look at this, it's happening. So it was good. I saw Town Manager Renshaw there, among others, and I think it was successful, well-received, and.
Very well attended.
Potentially some solutions out of it, or some can-do, like coupling of resources and know-how workforce came out of it. So nothing of substance to bring to the Select Board's attention, or, you know, things to weigh in on, but other than it was good.
I attended the Great Pond Property Owners Meeting just to listen, and on the theme of kudos, I expressed this in email, but Superintendent Lowell's not here anymore to hear it in this forum, but as always, just really impressed with the really thorough, very professional, very approachable way that she runs those sessions. Felt like a lot of people got questions answered, made their concerns heard, and learned a lot there. So thought that was a terrific meeting. And then I have, in the handing off of liaisons, I spoke with Mr. Richardson. Since he is currently away, the Affordable Housing Committee is going to be discussing some ideas this Thursday at their meeting, that they really wanted to have a Select Board member there to just kind of hear those conversations. So I'm gonna do one last meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee, and we'll report back to this group on, on some of what is shared this week.
Along those lines, any meeting that is of importance that one may have to miss, I would just recommend flagging it for the rest of us, and we'll just see who's available to attend. If it's a case like this where it's important that a Select Board member attend for input purposes, happy to jump in as necessary.
Anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn right on time tonight, 9:30.
So moved.
Future agenda items? Are we entertaining any future agenda items?
Well, I know we've mentioned one or two. Do you have any?
Well, I had a couple. I mean, I.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
The ice statement, I pointed out to you, I think that there's a typo in there that should be corrected. I don't know if you want to do it at the forum. I don't know if that's an appropriate place, but there's a misstatement in it, so.
Well, I think we've had it looked at again by, by town council. I mean, if it's a particular typo, that's.
I feel like it is. It says that.
You're talking about interfering as opposed to assisting? I mean, I don't.
I'm talking about the, it says that we're legally prohibited from assisting them.
Well, that's, as opposed to interfering.
Yeah, we are prevented from interfering, but I think we just kind of a little bit missed it there. I think the intent of the statement is, substance of it is correct, but I think we just missed it a little bit on the actual specific.
I don't think that's a typo, though. I mean, I think there's a, you know, a wide difference between, you know, interfering with and assisting, and I know that.
Certainly, there is.
Yeah. And I think town council has, you know, looked at it again as we requested, because, you know, we took your concern and, you know, had council take a look at it.
Well, I haven't been aware of that.
Well, I think I sent you an email over the weekend, I think, saying that council had looked at it again in response to your question.
Hmm. I thought you said you didn't think we need to do anything about it.
I didn't think we did, but, but in addition to that, I thought that, I said that council had taken a look at it. I mean, am I correct in that regard?
I have looked at it. I did approve it. I don't see any problems with it. If, do you want to have a conversation offline so I can better understand what your concerns are?
Yeah. I just thought that it looked like it was a misstatement. I read it, and, and I read the law that applies to it, and it looked like it was incongruous, but yeah, we can talk about it afterwards. And then I'd still think we'd like to have a correspondence policy at some point, and the other one I'd like to have is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to talk about the Capital Improvement Plan and possibly paring that down so that it's more manageable.
I have no problem. I think our first joint meeting should be with the Planning Board, and I think that was, you know, something that Mr. Renshaw was gonna try to coordinate. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be meeting with the Finance Committee as well, but I think, you know, the one with the Planning Board and zoning reform and so forth is long overdue. You know, the charter says we're supposed to meet them twice a year, I think. But I agree, we would certainly have a meeting with the Finance Committee and.
The town meeting's coming up quick. The warrant's closing in end of August, so.
Maybe if I can piggyback on what Mr. Brown has said, is working on some kind of agenda flow or some way to capture where we are on certain things so that we know, okay, we do need to meet with planning before another, another body, but just so we're in the, in the know that of like, here's the game plan for us to get to capital improvement. So just some way to map it out over the course of, you know, our 26 meetings in a given year with the milestones that we know we have to get at, which are, you know, town meeting, and you're working your way backwards, the budgetary process, knowing that, working it backwards. But there's some way to map it, I think, would be good, because then we can fill in the rest with.
Yeah, well, that's been a comment this meeting before, and Peter and I will look at that. I know Diane Davidson, the office manager, has some of those, you know, working our way backwards, town meeting, milestones.
Vice Chair Goldstone was working on that as well, so I think it's something that we've all been thinking about.
Yeah, so maybe that's our strategic plan, and, but something so that we can just constantly be reminded of where we are and where we're headed.
Doug, I'm certainly, you know, happy to discuss the correspondence policy, you know, at a meeting. You know, I think we're doing a fairly decent job in responding as best we can through the town manager's office. I think that is currently the best way to approach it, as opposed to individual members responding. I think it gets a little too confused, but I'm certainly happy to discuss it further on a future agenda. I'm not trying to.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Well, now do we have a motion?
Now, motion to adjourn?
Yes?
So moved.
No, I want to talk more.
Sure you don't have anything else, right? All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right. Good meeting. Thank you.
Yeah.